Our meeting of Monday, June 3rd, Select Board Meeting. With me is Vice Chair John Fallon, Member Anthea Brady, Bill McGonigal, Mike Bentoncourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We're going to go through tonight, we're going to follow our agenda the best that we can. We do have a public hearing coming up at 7:45 for Cross Street. We're going to try to start right on time. So we'll get through donations, I think Town Managers report, and invite some public comment, and start that public hearing as close to 7:45 as we can. So, John, if you could help move us through some donations, that'd be great.
A move that we accept with gratitude, donation of $5,000 from the Winchester Hospital, Beth Israel Leahy Health, to the Board of Health for the Health Department Prevention Programming.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, a move that we accept with gratitude, a donation of $500 from Alicia Moon to be used for Packer Ellis Tennis Courts supplies and recreation gift account expenses.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
A move that accepts with gratitude, a donation of $150,000 from the Cummings $30 million grant program to the Council on Aging to continue the ESL program.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
A move that we accept with gratitude, a donation of $3,231.45 to extend polling hour grant from state.
To the state.
From the state, excuse me, to the Town Clerk's Office to be applied to election workers temporary wages from the March 2024 election.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Okay. Beth?
I just wanted to highlight the $150,000 grant from the Cummings Foundation for which we are very appreciative. It does, that's not the first time that the Council on Aging has received a grant of that size from the Cummings Foundation, and they've been able to do tremendous work with the funding that we've received from them. So, we are certainly very appreciative of their support.
我非常高兴，叫英卓
There you go.
What Bill said.
Yes. As a one-time English to Chinese teacher, I'm very happy we're doing this.
Yes. It's wonderful.
So, just first up, I had, I do have two appointments this evening. There's a late addition to one that just accepted a position today, so we'll add that. First up, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works to Building Maintenance Specialist of Kevin Sullivan from Bill Ricker, and I requested the Board waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
All right. Make a motion here. A move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Kevin Sullivan, DPW Building Maintenance Specialist.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Great. And then, the second one that is a late addition to the agenda this evening is, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time permanent appointment in the Engineering Department of Raymond Hugh from Malden as the Assistant Town Engineer. And again, I would request that the Board waive the customary 15-day period.
Right. A move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Raymond Hugh in the Engineer Department, Assistant Town Engineer.
Second? Anybody? Okay. Thanks, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. And just a few updates on items that aren't currently on the agenda. So, the Winchester Center Station project, they are ramping up construction out there, weekend construction in particular. They have notified the town they'll be working every Saturday through June for the rest of this month. Also, they will be coming into the Select Board meeting on June 17th for an update, and they'll also be holding a public information on Tuesday, June 25th. I don't have the details for that currently, but it's typically an evening meeting to try to just let the public know what's happening with the station project.
So, Beth, is it Neil who comes?
Nathan.
Nathan.
Yes.
Nathan had said on many occasions that he thought about the beginning of July, that part near Dagestinos would be open.
Yes.
What is, what's your feeling on that?
Well, we have a meeting on Friday morning with the state delegation that the MBTA has requested, so I suspect we're probably not going to hit that target, but.
EverSource Junior.
Yeah.
I will say that, I mean, they've had full crews out there on the weekends and through, I mean, so, but it doesn't look close. I mean.
Not so much.
As a casual observer, it feels not quite there.
We start seeing elevators running up and down on tests, we'll feel.
Close.
Yeah. Doors that open, maybe, you know?
So certainly, the next meeting we'll have, have an update on schedule.
It is getting more and more crowded at Wedgemere. So, the sooner we get that open.
Yeah.
Yes.
Definitely. Next up, I just wanted to mention that the Select Board, we have scheduled a joint hearing, meeting for this Friday, June 7th at 9:00 AM via Zoom. It's a joint meeting of the Select Board, School Committee, Capital Planning Committee, EFPBC and Finance Committee, and the purpose of the meeting is to get an update from Gordian, who has been the consultant that we've been working to update our VFA software, which is the database that we use to understand our building capital needs. So, that meeting, again, will be scheduled for this Friday at 9:00 AM. It'll be recorded, so we'll be able to have it shown, they can't, we can't show it that morning, but we'll be able to have them replay it, and certainly anybody who's interested in getting a copy of that recording, we can share it. Just continuing to mention the hazardous waste collection days, there's two additional days this summer, June 15th and then July 20th. Also, we are coming to the end of our public outreach period for the Town Center traffic coming improvements, so we've done quite a bit of outreach to the businesses and other folks in the downtown area. We had information at Town Day that the Planning Board was able to help us share, and then we are scheduled to have a virtual public meeting on Tuesday, June 11th at 6:00 PM. There's additional information flyer in the Board's packet, and we're going to be doing everything we can to promote that over the next few weeks, or next week, before that meeting. And then just a few updates with respect to ongoing construction projects, or upcoming construction projects, the Lynch School Traffic Improvements, that project will go out to bid in July. Leonard and McDonald Field work, we actually have a user group meeting scheduled for a week from tonight at 6:00 PM to get an update from Chris Huntress, who is the landscape architect we're working with to design those two playgrounds. Packer Ellis Tennis Courts, there's been a series of design meetings held with stakeholders. We expect to have a schematic design completed this summer, and I've asked that the consultant come into the Select Board to give an update on where that stands, with the expectation that there'll be a upcoming capital request in the next cycle for that additional work.
Beth, what's going with the Ginn Field lights as far as, you know, this has been like a standing headline as far as it's projects more than expected than we thought, but what's the timeline to get that work done?
Right. So at this point, we're not able to kind of pull together the additional funding through any of our kind of end-of-year accounts, or through the recreation revolving accounts. So at this point, we're expecting to go back to capital planning with an additional request for the fall.
What's the delta on it? How much do you need?
I want to say it's somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000, but that's just round numbers from my, from my memory.
Thank you.
Yep. Morocco Culvert, we have that project that just went out to bid last week, and the bid opening is scheduled for July 9th. South Reservoir Dam project is currently out to bid, that bid opening is scheduled for June 20th. Leonard Field Rapid Flashing Beacon, that work, the curb extension is complete, and we're just waiting for the RFBs to be installed. And then the library roof immediate repairs, that project is, has a bid opening this week, so we'll have that work going on this summer. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, there's a lot of events happening here in town over the next, next week or so. The Winchester High School Senior Prom and Promenade is this Wednesday, June 5th, starting at 6:00 PM at Winchester High School, and graduation is June 7th at Manchester Fields, outdoors, weather-dependent. The farmer's market starts up this weekend, starting June 8th at 9:30, and will go every Saturday through October. And then we also have Winchester Porch Fest starting this Saturday, or this Saturday, from noon to 5:30. And then finally, we, the Network for Social Justice is putting on their annual Pride Fest on the Town Common this Tuesday, June 4th, starting at 4:30 PM. Thank you.
Lot going on. Thank you, Beth. Okay.
Can I just add on the Pride Fest that that's organized by the students? So, it's a really great event, and nice that the students are able to organize and create that event for the town.
Yep. And I think the weather looks good for tomorrow. If it was Thursday, there might be some trouble, but I think they're okay. Okay. So, before we move into the public hearing, is anyone here for public comment unrelated to the public hearing? Come on up, if you would. Ms. Conti? For the record, if you could state your name and address, that'd be great.
Yes, I'm Laura Conti from Four Highland View. It's somewhat related, but it's just a little broader. So, I was hoping to hear, if not in this presentation sometime later, what the whole plan is on Cross Street with the traffic improvements. In particular, I was reviewing the traffic, that really long transportation study from last August, and it had indicated number one priority for Holton Street and Cross Street, as well as Cross and Forest. So I was just wondering when we might hear about Holton and Cross in addition to what's being discussed tonight, given that this roadway is being finished up this summer. So, that's my comment and question. Thank you.
Well, I know Holton's not a part of tonight's hearing, but I think, I think we'll probably have some more updates for EverSource and plans for the full sort of restoration of Cross Street over subsequent meetings. I don't know, Beth, do we have more detail specifically on Holton?
Yeah, and I'm sure Matt and Erica can touch on it a little bit at the start of their presentation. We did, over the past few years, we had kind of looked at a couple of different design plans there. We've scaled it back a little bit after running some physical trucks through that intersection to see what works. And so we will be putting in Rapid Flashing Beacon across, basically relocating that into.
Million dollar grant program to the Council on Aging to continue the ESL program.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes.
A move that we accept with gratitude, a donation of three thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents to extend polling hour grant from state.
To the state.
From the state, excuse me, to the town clerk's office to be applied to election workers temporary wages from the March twenty twenty-four election.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Okay. Beth?
I just wanted to highlight the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Cummings Foundation for which we are very appreciative. It does, that's not the first time that the Council on Aging has received a grant of that size from the Cummings Foundation, and that they've been able to do tremendous work with the funding that we've received from them. So we are certainly very appreciative of their support.
Well,非常高兴，叫英语.
There you go.
What Bill said.
Yes. As a one-time English to Chinese teacher, I'm very happy we're doing that.
It's wonderful.
So just first up, I had, I do have two appointments this evening. There's a late addition to one that just accepted a position today, so we'll add that. First up, in accordance with section four dash two B of the town charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works to building maintenance specialist of Kevin Sullivan from Bilirica, and I requested the board waive the customary fifteen-day appointment period.
Right. Make a motion here. I move that we waive the fifteen-day waiting period for Kevin Sullivan, DPW, building maintenance specialist.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Great. And then the second one that is a late addition to the agenda this evening is, in accordance with section four dash two B of the town charter, I've made the following regular full-time permanent appointment in the engineering department of Raymond Hugh from Malden as the assistant town engineer. And again, I would request that the board waive the customary fifteen-day period.
Right. I move that we waive the fifteen-day waiting period for Raymond Hugh in the engineer department, assistant town engineer.
Second? Okay. Thanks, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. And just a few updates on items that aren't currently on the agenda. So the Winchester Center Station project, they are ramping up construction out there, weekend construction in particular. They have notified the town they'll be working every Saturday through June for the rest of this month. Also, they will be coming into the select board meeting on June seventeenth for an update, and they'll also be holding a public information on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth. I don't have the details for that currently, but it's typically an evening meeting to try to just let the public know what's happening with the station project.
So Beth, is it Neil who comes?
Nathan.
Nathan, Nathan. And Nathan had said on many occasions that he thought about the beginning of July, that part near Dagestinos would be open.
Yes.
What is, what's your feeling on that?
Well, we have a meeting on Friday morning with the state delegation that the MBTA has requested, so I suspect we're probably not going to hit that target, but.
EverSource Junior.
Yeah.
I will say that, I mean, they've had full crews out there on the weekends and through, I mean, so, but it doesn't look close.
Not so much.
As a casual observer, it feels not quite there.
We start seeing elevators running up and down on tests. We'll feel.
Close.
Yeah. Doors that open, maybe, you know.
So certainly at the next meeting, we'll have, have an update on schedule.
It is getting more and more crowded at Wedgemere. So the sooner we get that open.
Yeah.
Yes.
Next up, I just wanted to mention that the select board, we have scheduled a joint hearing, meeting for this Friday, June seventh, at nine AM via Zoom. Joint meeting of the Select Board, School Committee, Capital Planning Committee, EFPBC and Finance Committee, and the purpose of the meeting is to get an update from Gordian, who has been the consultant that we've been working to update our VFA software, which is the database that we use to understand our, our building capital needs. So that meeting, again, will be scheduled for this Friday at nine AM. It'll be recorded, so we'll be able to have it shown. They can't, we can't, can't show it that morning, but we'll be able to have them replay it. And certainly anybody who's interested in getting a copy of that recording, we can share it. Just continuing to, to mention the hazardous waste collection days, there's two additional days this summer, June fifteenth, and then July twentieth. Also, we are coming to the end of our public outreach period for the town center traffic coming improvements, so we've done quite a bit of outreach to the businesses and other folks in the downtown area. We had information at Town Day that the planning board was able to help us share, and then we are scheduled to have a virtual public meeting on Tuesday, June eleventh, at six PM. There's additional information flyer in the board's packet, and we're going to be doing everything we can to promote that over the next few weeks, or next week, before that meeting. And then just a few updates with respect to ongoing construction projects or upcoming construction projects, the Lynch School Traffic Improvements, that project will go out to bid in July. Leonard and McDonald Field work, we actually have a user group meeting scheduled for a week from tonight at six PM to get an update from Chris Huntress, who is the landscape architect we're working with to design those two playgrounds. Paco's tennis courts, there's been a series of design meetings held with stakeholders. We expect to have a schematic design completed this summer, and I've asked that, that consultant come into the select board to give an update on where that stands, with the expectation that there'll be a upcoming capital request in the next cycle for that additional work.
Beth, what's, what's going with the Ginnfield lights as far as, you know, this has been like a standing headline as far as it's projects more than expected than we thought, but what's the timeline to get that work done?
Right. So at this point, we're not able to kind of pull together the additional funding through any of our kind of end-of-year accounts or through the recreation revolving accounts. So at this point, we're expecting to go back to capital planning with an additional request for the fall.
What's the delta on it? How much do you need?
I want to say it's somewhere between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars, but that's just round numbers from my, from my memory.
Thank you.
Yep. Morocco Culvert, we have that project that just went out to bid last week, and the bid opening is scheduled for July ninth. South River Dam project is currently out to bid. That bid opening is scheduled for June twentieth. Leonard Field Rapid Flashing Beacon, that work, the curb extension is complete, and we're just waiting for the, the RFBs to be installed. And then the library roof immediate repairs, that project is, has a bid opening this week, so we'll have that work going on this summer. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, there's a lot of events happening here in town over the next, next week or so. The Winchester High School Senior Prom and Promenade is, is this Wednesday, June fifth, starting at six PM at Winchester High School. And graduation is June seventh at Manchester Fields, outdoors, weather dependent. The farmer's market starts up this weekend, starting June eighth at nine thirty, and will go every Saturday through October. And then we also have Winchester Porch Fest starting this Saturday, or this Saturday, from noon to five thirty. And then finally, we, the Network for Social Justice is putting on their annual Pride Fest on the Town Common this Tuesday, June fourth, starting at four thirty PM. Thank you.
Lot going on. Thank you, Beth. Okay.
Can I just add on the Pride Fest that that's organized by the students? So it's a really great event, and nice that the students are able to organize and, and create that event for the town.
Yep. And I think the weather looks good for tomorrow. If it was Thursday, there might be some trouble, but I think they're okay. Okay, so before we move into the public hearing, is anyone here for public comment unrelated to the public hearing? Come on up, if you would. Ms. Conti, for the record, if you could state your name and address, that'd be great.
I'm Laura Conti from Four Highland View. It's somewhat related, but it's just a little broader. So I was hoping to hear, if not in this presentation sometime later, what the whole plan is on Cross Street with the traffic improvements. In particular, I was reviewing the traffic, that really long transportation study from last August, and it had indicated number one priority for Holton Street and Cross Street, as well as Cross and Forest. So I was just wondering when we might hear about Holton and Cross in addition to what's being discussed tonight, given that this roadway is being finished up this summer. So that's my comment and question. Thank you.
Well, I know Holton's not a part of tonight's hearing, but I think, I think we'll probably have some more updates for EverSource and plans for the full sort of restoration of Cross Street over subsequent meetings. I don't know, Beth, if we have more detail specifically on Holton.
Yeah, and I'm sure Matt and Erica can touch on it a little bit at the start of their presentation. We did, over the past few years, we had kind of looked at a couple of different design plans there. We've scaled it back a little bit after running some, some physical trucks through that intersection to see what works. And so we will be putting in Rapid Flashing Beacon across, basically relocating that existing crosswalk in a very similar location on Cross Street with a new Rapid Flashing Beacon to allow for safe crossing across Cross Street.
Across Holton Street?
Across Cross Street at Holton.
So across Holton's going to remain that really long?
I think it's going to be shortened a little bit, but again, there was, last summer, I think we had kind of physically put out some barriers to see what we could do and get trucks through there, and we can do less than I think we had hopes. Because we wanted, we need to make sure that it's safe for, you know, we want to create a condition where we have trucks up on sidewalks and in crosswalks and on curb, curb extension. So again, I'm sure Erica and Matt can touch on that a little bit.
Is that like this summer, or is that?
Yes. So, well, I'll let, I'll let them.
All right.
Later. They'll say that later.
They're, I think, up next.
They're up next. Exactly. Exactly. Anybody else here for public comment? Okay. So that being the case, we're going to open the public hearing for Cross Street, Forest Street Traffic Improvements. And thank you, Matt and Erica. Hopefully, your presentation is going to appear here in a second when Patty hits the magic button.
Go get it if I need to, but.
Yes.
Thank you.
So they'll give the presentation for folks sort of watching or in the room. They'll give the presentation, and then we'll invite people who want to comment, and then we'll close the hearing, but we're going to let them present first.
Awesome. Thanks.
Sure. And just by way of some background for folks, this is part of the improvements that Ms. Conti was talking about for Cross Street. That follow-up on a Cross Street corridor study that was done roughly twenty twenty, and also following up on our transportation plan that we finished up last year. Back in twenty twenty, I think folks were kind of anticipating that we had the River Street development coming, we had EverSource coming in. There were some funds for restoration associated with those projects. How is, what is the best way to use those funds to have the most impact on Cross Street? In terms of the corridor study, the recommendations included installing a Rapid Flashing Beacon on Cross Street at Kirk Street. So that's something that isn't, does not need select board approval, so that's something we're going to be going ahead with. The improvements at Cross Street and Holton Street, which we did have a public hearing on, I believe, last fall, which is being scheduled with EverSource and using some of the funds that are available to us from these other projects. And then finally, kind of, but we've called Cross Street at Forest Street, but it really encompasses that area basically from the railroad bridge to just pass the businesses on, on Cross Street. And with that, I think I'll give it to Erica to talk a little bit more.
Thanks. Yeah, so I'm going to jump in on the section that we're here for tonight, and then if there's any follow-up questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So tonight, we're talking about Cross Street roughly between the Tri-Community Greenway Crossing by that kind of sports complex heading east over to Marion Street, and that encompasses Cross at Forest Street, which is a key component of this evaluation. So what we're looking at and what I will discuss briefly tonight, the scope of work is related to reviewing crash data in the area, evaluating intersection control at Forest Street. Essentially, does it warrant a signal? We looked at a roundabout, like all these different ideas for, for that intersection. We observed on-street parking to determine if it's being utilized and how it's being utilized. Conducted a, you know, a sidewalk inventory, just kind of walked the, the street in both directions and saw where there were gaps or some issues to, to be addressed, lack of curbing. And then we considered improvements at the Tri-Community Path location as well. So the crash analysis, we looked at twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, which is the most recent period that we could pull. There were three crashes at Forest Street. Now, now that does not mean that there are not near misses that are not being documented or non-reported crashes, and that actually only accounts for when there's damage over a thousand dollars. Generally, you don't actually get those reported crashes that are any smaller than that. So, you know, three crashes may not sound like a lot, but I think it's pretty uncomfortable for people regardless in this location. All three crashes were due to vehicles on Forest Street misjudging the gap that they had in traffic on Cross Street. There actually isn't a sightline issue, although we're going to look at that a little bit closer and make sure we're not parking right up on the, on the curb line there. But it's mostly them misjudging the speed on Cross Street, and maybe they were going a little faster than they were expecting. So I looked at a few different options for the intersection control at Forest Street at Cross Street. We got counts. We got counts from seven AM to seven PM on a weekday to try to understand that twelve-hour period. Counts demonstrated that a lot of vehicles, as you might guess, are traveling from Forest Street towards westbound on Cross Street and back and forth that way. There's not a lot of movement coming from Cross Street taking a right onto Forest Street. It's a lot of kind of lefts going under the bridge, cutting across. So maintaining existing control is what I'm going to ultimately be recommending today, which is just a stop sign on Forest Street, and then enhancing some signage and markings, which we'll get into shortly. We looked at an always-stop control. You need eight hours a day that it needs to be warranted, it has to hit a certain volume threshold to be warranted as an always-stop control, or there's a few other metrics that can go into that. It only hits it four, four hours of the day, so it's not actually warranted. It'd have to be an engineering judgment thing if I really felt like strongly that it was a safety benefit to have that. However, I don't find it feasible because when we kind of analyzed it in the Synchron model, which is a traffic exercise, we found that the queues would extend past Tri-Community Crossing, and what I really don't want to have happen is, is vehicles queuing across that crossing. Then you end up having sightline issues where there's people crossing the street, and you've got cars backed up across that crosswalk. We looked at adding a left, or eastbound left turn pocket on always, with an always-stop control. Again, that was feasible, but it ended up, when, when you have a taper length, not to get too technical with it, when you try to add that left turn lane, it makes it really tight coming back to the crosswalk. And what I don't want to have happen is a double threat, which is when you have two lanes across a crosswalk in one direction, someone courtesy stops and the other person doesn't, and you end up in a, in a dangerous situation for the crosswalk.
Did you analyze no left turn, and then going down to the stoplight and then coming down Forest Street?
No, I did not. No, I did not. And we can certainly talk about that if that's what you're saying. No, we did not. No. No, we didn't look at changing any access, no access changes. The traffic signal is not feasible, doesn't hit any of the warrants for that. It also would cause a lot of challenges with constructability and having the lane configurations work at the intersection. And a mini roundabout does not fit physically with the right-of-way. Probably not surprising.
Can we have a Sims Corner, part two?
Yeah, you want another roundabout in town, right? So then we looked at on-street parking here. It is well utilized. I just grabbed a street view to kind of show you what it generally looks like. No surprises here. There's generally pretty well-used on both sides of the street, and people are actually mounting the, where there's kind of not a lot of curbing. It's kind of low, and it's not, you know, kind of older curbing, and they're mounting and kind of impacting the sidewalk experience and, and kind of blocking the sidewalks in some cases. It's a little too narrow for the on-street parking to be official, and so people are making it happen, and so that's something we're, we're looking at as well.
Because that, that was, I saw the picture, Erica, and now I beg the question, does, does that work for just parking on one side of the street? Would that be feasible, or should it be no parking? Because if you go through there at four thirty or five o'clock at night, it, it's like a complete disaster. What's going on here?
Yeah, it's, it's certainly wide enough for parking on one side, but we are aware of some, you know, businesses and neighbors that, like, clearly it's something that is well-used and that people are wanting an amenity that people would like to keep, so we've actually looked at an opportunity to move the curbing a little bit and make it fit, so.
Thank you.
So this is just a quick grab of just some of the photos we took of the sidewalks. They're a mix of asphalt and concrete. They're missing in some, yeah, sidewalk, missing in some locations inconsistent curbing, if there is curbing at all. There's gaps in the network. You can see on the right-hand side that, that is used sort of as parking instead of sidewalk, but that's sort of where the sidewalk takes you. And, you know, clearly the driveway aprons are, are non-compliant and are in kind of rough shape. So those are all things that we're looking to address with this plan as well. We did look at the Tri-Community Crossing. We had some really fun ideas that we thought about, including like a two-way on the street. It's, that, that bridge makes it really challenging. It's a, it's an offset crossing. There's a, sorry, there's a, Tri-Community Path is offset, and you have to cross the street and then walk along the sidewalk to get to the other side, and that's over a small bridge, which would cause an astronomical cost if we tried to change the, the disposition of that bridge. And building anything on the bridge is a challenge, too. You really can't just throw, you know, wider sidewalk or new curb on the bridge as well. So we looked at a few different options, but ultimately are leaning towards just making it safer, more visible, and slowing vehicles down, which I'll get to. But we did look at two hours of video data just to kind of demonstrate what people are doing now. I think it's interesting information. Of the twenty-four cyclists, we saw crossing Cross Street, eighteen crossed at the crosswalk, including one dismount, which I think is what you're told to do, but I think in reality, we, a lot of us know that's not what happens. And then rode along the sidewalk, and then six crossed and rode in the street to the intersection of Cross at Forest. And then seventeen pedestrians crossed at the, at the, sorry, of the seventeen, twelve used the crossing at the Greenway, and five were at the intersection.
Did you only look at continuity on the path?
We looked, no, we looked at all kind of activity happening in the area, yeah. With a focus on the path, I would say, but I'm curious what you're.
Well, so coming, I typically come from the Leonard Pond side of that path to cross to go up Forest Street. I say no, like, half of the. And the, the sightline, at the, what changes my behavior in a way that I wouldn't tell my kids to do is that the, the sightlines I cross are, seem okay. You can see very clearly somebody coming in either direction. They may not heed the, the crosswalk or, or the beacon, but you can see them, and it feels very different on Forest that if I'm going across and up, I typically go up Cross Street to avoid the, the Forest crosswalk. So I don't know if you saw any of that.
The Forest crosswalk, meaning crossing Forest?
Like go to the community path, cross, and then come back.
So not, so not necessarily continuing on the path, but crossing from the longer end of the path?
Yeah.
To go.
So you're finding the crossing of Forest Street uncomfortable, though? Okay, all right. Yeah, let's, we can, when, maybe when it's up on the screen, too, you can point it out, but I'd be curious to hear that. So here we are now, maybe that would be helpful. I, I guess you want to point it out now before I kind of run through?
So if I'm, where you have that green, the driveway next to the vet.
Here's my little cursor here, if you can see.
Right there.
Okay, yep.
And if I'm going sort of up on, on that side of the road, up Forest Street, I will sometimes come up to that sort of, across from that driveway to cross, to avoid crossing on Forest Street, because I think as a pedestrian, there's a, and as a driver, there's a blind spot when you're turning left on Forest that it feels uncomfortable to cross on Forest if there's an alternative.
Did you, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not quite, I'm really, I'm struggling to follow where you're.
So if I'm standing at the, the corner of, I'm, I'll walk over.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm not.
If I'm standing here.
Yep.
Or here, but especially here, oh, there's a blind spot for a left-turn driver. And, and also people tend to, as you noted, they tend to sort of slide through this intersection, that it sometimes feels, if I can make one crossing a little bit higher up and avoid crossing here, that that's.
So you're, oh, okay. So you're crossing Cross Street out of the crosswalk further down to avoid that? Okay. Thank you. So I'll run through this real quick, and then we can kind of open it up. So there's just two of these. So starting from the community path, we're looking to slow vehicles down here without being super impactful to the, the bridge that's there. So we're looking to put in speed humps. They're a little easier to construct than a raised crosswalk, which we looked at, and will hopefully reduce speeds within, you know, the vicinity of the crossing on both sides, and also approaching Cross, the Forest Street intersection as well. The question may come up is why is speed humps okay here and not on Pond Street? And I would just throw it out there that this street has volumes that are about two-thirds or less of what Pond Street carries, specifically in this stretch. And this, because of the, the low bridge there, you actually don't have truck activity to that degree there, because of the clearance that's there.
And the fire department said that the ladder does not go underneath the bridge.
Thank you. So, you know, enhancing the yield lines, refreshing those, those markings and the signage associated with that, moving towards Forest Street. We would be extending the curb kind of where that larger green area is on the south side there to narrow up the intersection a little bit and make that sidewalk a little bit more comfortable. We actually just have like too much pavement there. We ran the truck turns on that. There was no issue there. If you're looking at the north side of the intersection, we did have a little bit more challenges with drainage and, and grading. You know, I think ideally we would have built this out as well, and actually, if you look at a, a street view, it's actually changed over the last few years. It used to be pushed further back to the building. It got pulled out a little bit. But there, the building there right now has stairs like right on the sidewalk. It would be pretty impactful to be, to be messing with their, their sidewalk and changing their grading. So we're looking to just mark it at this time. On the other side, there's a, there's a dramatic amount of stuff happening on this corner. There's, you know, utility poles, catch basins, drainage, all that kind of stuff, and it's flowing down Cross Street. So for now, we're looking to just paint that out to discourage parking right up on the corner. Moving further down, as you had pointed out, we are actually pushing the curb in a little bit, taking some of the landscape area. And then right now, if you look at street view, there's like kind of brick pavers and a low curb, so we're going to be replacing all that and pushing it in, like on Swanton Street, you have this condition where you've got like the one utility pole that kind of pops out along the parking, just, that's just like a foot to allow for that curb to be deep enough to allow for the parking to be, you know, compliant and official on both sides of Cross Street, which we thought it was important for the businesses in the area and neighbors.
So parking will look very much like it looks today at the.
Except they won't be on curbs.
Except it won't be on, half on the street, half on the.
And there will be, you know, actual curbing on both sides, kind of, and it will be more comfortable to get in and out of your car.
But just before, for, just before Forest, we were putting stripes. Are we doing no parking here at a corner? Are we doing any? So you can like say, please don't park here because the stripes are here, but are we making it clear that they shouldn't park beyond a certain driveway? So that the, you know, the sightlines that Anthe is talking about don't get compromised with more cars.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, if you're talking, are you talking about the north side by the vet?
Yes, I think so.
There is a, there, well, there was a no parking sign there that I think got removed as part of the EverSource project, so we tried to match that as closely as possible, so the intent would be no parking.
We'll put the sign back.
All along there today, on both sides, actually, but all along the vet side and up on the curb at the end.
I know that in town, you have some, like the no parking kind of in the pavement markings along those hatch lines. That could be a, a good addition there as well.
We need both. But yes, but you're saying, Matt, if it was there, that's something we want to make sure, make sure we see restored.
Let's see.
Obviously, it impacts fire trucks and other things, too, but just sight, sightlines and safety.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Regarding signage, that's just something that came to mind. There used to be a no-truck sign when you turned onto Forest. My guess is that it may have been removed because if you come down there as a truck, you got to go somewhere.
Yeah, that's actually.
But I know less than ten years ago it was there and was removed, but I do wonder about having more no-truck sign back up towards Washington. People don't.
I thought there was, there's one on the Washington Street.
There is one on the Washington Street side. I would just point out again, it's not a posted truck exclusion route per Mastot, so.
It's a clearance sign, not a no-truck sign. It would be letting them know the, the height restriction.
It was on, it was at, by the vet parking lot, so it was as you turned onto Forest Street, there's, there's a sign that said no, no trucks.
I'm, yeah, I'd have to look if that's an official thing, but I, I would believe, I believe that what you said is probably appropriate, that they would need to turn up if they've got further down, but we could look at if it, I don't think it's a truck restricted route here aside from the clearance kind of naturally makes it so that most trucks cannot drive down here. I can dip through this really, there's just one more page, and it's fairly straightforward, so, because I think that other one.
Go off that. So if you could go back to the last side, I just want to point out that in front of, of like the, on the other side of the street from the vet, that that will be a new strip of on-street parking.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're reducing it to, what, ten-foot lanes?
Yes, it's marked as ten-foot lanes with eight-foot parking lanes.
And we're adjusting the curb on both sides to be able to get those parking lanes.
Yes. The curb is fairly aligned with where it would already be on the south side, and we're pushing in on the, the kind of landscaped area where there's some pavers and stuff now to accommodate the, the width that's needed there.
Just to be clear, that even though we didn't hatch out the south side between Forest Street and the speed humps, we're not planning on adding parking there, that little, the little bends. We would probably add some no parking signs, just to make that clear.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, real quick on this next one, um, so that was, uh, this, this section here was where people were kind of parking where there was, you know, no curbing and no sidewalk. Um, so we'll be providing that parking with, on-street, um, now with this plan, adding curbing and putting a sidewalk in. So it should accommodate, you know, everything that is aiming for in that section. Um, and then further down, just kind of marking out the parking to be more, um, official there. I think we've got nine-foot parking here. We had a little bit of extra along the, the, it, there's like a ballet school or something there, and we noticed that there was a good amount of people getting picked up and dropped off, so we thought a little bit wider, um, there could be, could be beneficial as well. And then, uh, marking the, the crosswalks along the side streets as well, um, and maintaining those ten-foot lanes all the way through.
Will the, um, sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, sidewalks there, will those be sort of replaced or smoothed out? Along that stretch, Marion, down?
We, so right now, we're just showing, um, the, what's hatched out in gray as being new sidewalk. Um, I would not, we were not planning on doing additional sidewalk repairs unless we have money in the budget.
Okay, I know some of them are not super smooth, and then, um, ADA, those markings that go in on the corners at the crosswalks?
The tactile strips?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so, the summary is, the design incorporates two speed humps, uh, five hundred and eighty feet of linear curb, um, area of newer rebuilt sidewalk is two thousand six hundred square feet, uh, reconstructed or new curb ramps, ten. It aims, the design aims to, uh, decrease vehicle speeds in the vicinity of Forest Street and the tri-community crossing, um, improve conditions of sidewalks at curb ramps for pedestrians, and to formalize, uh, on-street parking on Cross Street. Um, and next step, so it will require subpermitting through Concom, given that the brook is right there with the bridge, um, and then we'll continue to coordinate with Public Works and Eversource.
Yeah, so just to add on that, we are still sort of in a concept stage, um, and there are a lot of moving parts with Eversource out there, beginning restoration, uh, towards the, the, um, main street side of the street right now. But our hope would be to have Eversource perhaps install the curbing on the north side, which is kind of by the Vet, and perhaps put the speed humps in for us when they do the paving. Um, we might be lagging a little bit further behind in terms of getting the rest of the sidewalk complete, just because we are at concept stage right now and need to finish the design.
Okay. How quickly do we think Eversource will be doing that paving?
I-
End of summer?
I believe this season, um, but the, the intent is to pave this season, they have a lot of restoration to do.
Yep, okay. All right, thank you. So, any questions from the board, before we invite members of the public? Any questions for Erica and Matt? I know we asked them as we went, but just didn't know anymore, okay. I think one benefit from your design, Erica, you could update, is like, you know, formalize parking on the street and remove parking from the sidewalk would be another little bullet you could add to that, you know, take the cars off the sidewalks.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I do think the sightlines get improved when those parked cars are kind of pushed out a little bit from that intersection field as well, so I think that'll have some benefits.
Okay.
Will this have any impact on how fast people drive down Cross Street? You know, narrowing the lanes and putting more-
Marginally.
Okay.
I don't think it's a, the speed hump certainly will, and I think, I, I believe that kind of coming towards them, if you start to know the street, that you'll be slowing down as you get towards them in both directions. Um, this, the speeds that we reported were, you know, I think it's a thirty mile per hour street, um, and they were right around, you know, twenty-eight to thirty-one was kind of the, the, uh, the speeds that we captured.
Okay.
So it wasn't a dramatic speeding issue, um, but still, we wanted to go slow and be yielding to those, you know, vulnerable users on the, on the crossing, and, and Forest Street certainly has a level of activity that I think people are being a little bit aggressive, so.
Yep.
Hopefully that helps.
Okay, thank you. Anything?
No, no, I just like to hear what the public has to say.
Yeah, so if, uh, members of the public want to come up, um, we would just ask if people want to come up, state your name, and if you're here and your neighbor said the same thing you were going to say, we could, in the interest of time, you could let your neighbor's comment stand, but whoever would like to come up, come on up. Mr. Covino, sure. You can have a seat over here.
Hi, Mario Covino, I own the property at eighty-seven, eighty-nine Cross Street. Um, is it possible to pull that veterinarian area up?
Just wondering.
Perfect. My driveway is, I believe, to the right of that, uh, and people park right on the corner, and coming out is difficult to swing around, you have to swing around into oncoming traffic. So I was, uh, hoping to get a sign put there, um, to, uh, you know, no parking here to driveway or corner or whatever, just to alleviate that, because it's a pretty tough, uh, place to pull out.
Is a particular side of your driveway that's more diffi-
The right side.
So this, the Vet side?
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Okay.
So I was hoping to, you know, get that, and I know we discussed it in the zoning board of appeals, uh, for the project, um, uh, you know, that's, I think the street needs a, parking on both sides of the street, I think is a hazard anyway, but, um, you know, I think most of the people from the Vet park, uh, the employees park out front, and they, the reason why they pull up on the curb is so their mirrors won't get groped.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's all, that's one of my biggest concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Symboli, um, I'm chair of the Board of Appeals, and this is a follow-up to, uh, what Mr. Covino was talking about. I don't know if you had an opportunity to check in with engineering, the building department. He is building the zoning board of appeals decision that he mentioned, is a nine-unit development, townhome development, in that driveway. And when we had, um, our hearings, it was approved in August, when we had the hearings, we, you know, uh, traffic mitigation, safety was part of the discussion. Our board was not empowered to mandate the placement of a sign to say no parking from here to the driveway. We did discuss the fact that there were visibility issues, and that we needed to, there needed to be space there for cars coming in and out of that nine-unit development of eighty-seven, eighty-nine Cross Street. Um, so, even though it's not part of the decision, it is a safety issue.
Okay.
And we addressed it as a safety issue, and it was discussed in the hearing that the developer would, um, approach the town engineer and DPW, because they're the ones that are empowered to be making those decisions in terms of putting in no parking zones. So that is why it's not part of the decision, it's that we weren't empowered to do it. If we had the power, we would have put it in there.
Yep.
So I, we feel, I feel really strongly, and I'm sure I represent, you know, the board, the rest of the board, we all discussed that this was a safety concern.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just, um, to provide some additional information or clarification, uh, for the curb line, the intent would be to install the curb to account for the approved plan in terms of, the plan included a little widening of the driveway or relocation of the driveway, so we would install the curb per the plan, per the approved plan, um, so that it doesn't have to get dug up again, and we can certainly work on a no parking here to driveway sign, that's not an issue.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hi, Shannon Callahan, thirty-one Forest. Um, I guess I'll start with, I know I've spoken to a bunch of you about my concerns, and thank you for listening and always meeting with me. Um, but I do have a couple of questions that might help inform comments that I'm going to make, that I hope you can walk me through. Um, and one is just, my poor memory, is, I know that, um, well, I guess first, let me start with, I love the speed bumps, the tri-community greenway, the, you know, focus on community and creating safe passage, I a thousand percent agree with, so I'm really thrilled to see those changes on that greenway. We use it as a pass to school, to Leonard Field, there's stalker, there's, you know, the improvements to the playground, it's really important, um, changes there. Um, I am curious, though, because I understand this is a cross-street corridor study, um, but it does, does intersect with Forest Street, and we have had multiple studies, like, on the Forest Street neighborhood, right? In one of them, two out of three improvements were implemented, one at Brookside and Forest, one at Clematis and Forest, which were wonderful and extremely impactful. Can you refresh my memory why the initial improvements at Forest Street that included actual curbing build-outs wasn't implemented?
So it actually was, the, as you said, there was some very minor adjustments at the corner.
Oh, yeah, but like, the actual curbing, that was-
It was absolutely-
That was it, it was like-
Yeah.
How, what was that, feet or inches of-
Yeah, it's not, again, it's-
And I don't mean to be, like, controversial, I just, I'm trying to-
We've kind of looked at it from many different directions over the years, and I think unfortunately, we keep landing on the same solution, which is not-
Which is nothing?
Which is not great, right, but, but it, but it's, it's that way for a reason, unfortunately.
Sorry, but what is the reason? Can you tell me, like, explicitly what the reason is, that you can't change an intersection that supports sixty-five hundred cars a day? So during those peak hours, it's like two cars every ten seconds that people are using, and you, you mentioned a gap in a network, we have to fix, um, sidewalks, which I completely understand. This is a crossing that is a major gap in the network, how are we getting safely across to get to these community resources safely? And we're not, Anthea mentioned, like, there are sightlines, we cross, you probably caught my family and I on video, we cross over by the Vet, like, kind of where that building is down on the right, to get, um, to the bike path, because crossing Forest Street is just categorically unsafe. And I was reading even through, like, the Mastot plan, and, you know, if cars are traveling at eighty-five percent speed, like, we're catering to that, but perception is ninety-nine percent reality, right? Like, we are perceiving the traffic there is insane, sixty-five hundred cars traveling down a quarter mile, and there's no safe crossing on the length of Forest, aside from Forest and Cross and Forest and Washington. So, I'm just, I just don't understand why the answer is always, we can't do anything. So, you don't have to answer it now, I'm just, I just don't get it.
You kind of touched on it in your-
Uh, yeah, I mean, so I will, admittedly, I haven't looked at the Forest Street corridor, um, but I can tell you with this crossing, we were, we ran, um, auto turn is the name of the program, where you're running the truck turns. Um, you know, I think we are fairly progressive, we weren't looking at, you know, major trucks, we, and we don't even really design for fire trucks. Um, the fire chief is actually pretty amenable to talking about multiple curbs and, and truck aprons and things like that. A fairly minor truck can't make that turn if you start pulling that curb in, so that's the problem. And, and you can't have them approaching over the center line, which means, like, they would have to swing out over the double yellow center line in order to, to execute the turns, so that's the problem. You're really not able to make anything different. So I put the markings down to try to encourage vehicles that can make the turn more tightly, like a, you know, a passenger vehicle, um, recognizing that we still need that curb to be where it is for, for-
For trucks or for emergency vehicles? Because there's a difference, right?
For trucks, for trucks, like, like, Amazon trucks, honestly, like, stuff like that, like, not even big ones. Um, so that's, that's where that comes from. Um, and then we're hoping to, you know, get cars to get further away from the, from the intersection to improve sightlines, we're pushing the cars out towards the curb, which will get them, hopefully the sightline, not hopefully, the sightline will be improved at that corner because of that. Um, I understand that it's not exactly what you're looking for, but we absolutely talked about changing those curb lines and we struggled with it.
Yeah.
And I would just add, you, you had mentioned during the presentation that the north side by the, um, those condos, it used to be a, a market or something, that there's an ADA challenge of making it compliant if we start to bump the curb out further. Um, and then on the other side, there's a lot of issues related to drainage and utilities, so I can't tell you how, how much time, uh, tools spent looking at this and town staff look, looking at this, and, you know, I think it's not perfect, but, but I think it's a step in the right direction.
Did you look at any non, like, permanent curbing options? Like, I know there's those flexible delineators that are used for bike paths, et cetera, and you can take them out, but that way you would have actual protection of pedestrians, because, like, the striping, you know, okay, I appreciate it, right, and I appreciate, I, I appreciate everything that you're doing and walking through, truly, but like, are we looking at tem, like, temporary fixtures to see if they work? Can we do a trial period? Hingham did that, they did it for, like, a road, what's it called, diet? Um, and they did it temporarily, right, and they saw the results, so then they were able to put in curbing. Now, maybe the temporary fix is the solution, but is there a way, there's just no protection on that corner for pedestrians or cyclists?
I would, I would just say, and I'm not going to answer for-
Yeah, no, that's fine, I guess, it's just a comment.
But the, the markings that we have out there now do not preclude any, any additional materials from being placed in there, so I'm certainly open to having that conversation.
Okay, okay, thanks. And one more question, just for my knowledge, is that green bump out, like, an attempt to make it more of a, sorry, I was researching at work today, more of a T-shaped intersection? Like, what's the goal of that green bump out?
Uh, it's mostly just to narrow it up, it's mostly to help with, um, honestly, uh, having people, like, peeling off to the side and kind of speeding up while people are taking a left.
Okay.
And you have way too much width there, and I don't want that to, I don't want to encourage that, given the crossing that's here and the speeds.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Roger, Roger Wilson, unknown to all you, been hiding in precinct one. Um, I have a, a couple of questions, uh, on your, uh, sample of, of users. What time of day was that, and, um, what time of year, and what was the weather?
Um, so the counts were done, um, oh goodness, it wasn't the winter. Um, I think we did them in November, though, it was kind of later in the year.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, the time of day, we picked this kind of smattering throughout the day, a little bit in the morning, um, we sped it up and watched a little bit in the afternoon as well.
Okay, because I've, I've made numerous samples, uh, and consistently had probably doubled those numbers.
Oh, yeah, I, we weren't intend, don't, I'm sorry, I should have said, we weren't intending that to be a count, it was, that was the number we looked at and to get a cross-section of what, uh, the way people are approaching the intersection.
Okay.
That was not a raw count.
Yeah, so, uh, today I stood there for fifteen minutes, and there's one witness in the room, uh, that saw that, but, um.
Good answer, Bob.
But, uh, um, uh, you know, fifteen people, uh, which would be ninety people an, an hour, um, uh, five groups activated the flasher, one, uh, didn't activate it but crossed on the crossing, and the others went out into Cross Street. Um, uh, two adults turned down toward the tracks and, and took Cross Street to get back on the path, and then two, uh, like, twelve-year-olds went out to the middle of Cross Street, balanced a little bit, um, waiting for cars to, uh, stop, and then crossed the street and went up, uh, Forest Street, uh, on the sidewalk. Um, so I think that's consistent with your observation and typical, so, the problems, what are the problems that we have here? It appears to me that we have, number one, that the connection between the two parts of the tri-community is simply not wide enough. It's six feet wide, uh, the sidewalk on the bridge, and at one point, it's four and a half feet wide, going, um, uh, between a telephone pole, uh, or where there's a telephone-
Hitch point, yeah.
Uh, so, that seems to me to be one major problem, the, the bike path is too narrow, and the Forest Street intersection seems very big to me.
Yep.
And accommodates people going at a high speed, turning into it, and, uh, and coming out of it. Um, is, is, where is the speed bump that's closest to Forest Street, relative to the bridge?
So the bridge, let's see, I guess I should have shown the bridge on this plan.
It's between the bridge and the, the driveway.
It's right here, the bridge.
So, isn't it on top of the culvert?
No, no, we went out and, uh, we measured it to make sure we could put it in.
And Matt actually went out and measured it, because we were trying to squeeze one in.
I, I would, I would challenge the idea that, um, uh, a, a sidewalk going across on the bridge, a six-foot-wide sidewalk, or, it's maybe six inches, uh, tall, on top of the bridge deck, um, i- is, is not doable. J- j- I mean, I don't see how it could be not doable when trucks, uh, could carry all those materials and, and many times over and go across the bridge.
Taking me back to structural engineering class, um, I am not a structural engineer, I'm not certified in that, um, there is a difference between the live load and dead load that you're referencing. Um, we can't even get flex posts on, on bridge decks. Like, structural engineers have a.
Yeah, but li- live load would be, uh, uh, a more, a bigger challenge than, uh, dead load, would it not?
There's something called a moment slab that you have to tie all these things into from an engineering perspective. I, adding a sidewalk or widening that sidewalk was not in the scope of work from, for Tool. This, that would be a separate structural analysis. Certainly we could do in the future if funding allowed, but was not in the scope of what they were looking at for this, for this work.
I, 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 I would ask the, the select board to challenge that, um, more strenuously. But could we move the, uh, main travel lanes that are crossing the bridge, uh, uh, north? Um, and so that the, the single white line, um, was essentially on the curb on the north side to give a wider space for bicyclists, um, to come through, uh, from the, uh, crosswalk? What, what I do if I'm coming from, uh, uh, from, from, uh, the park, uh, i- is I'll, I'll go halfway across the crosswalk and then turn up Cross Street and ride on the street rather than the sidewalk. Um, and, um.
It's harder in the other direction, honestly.
Yeah, I, but I saw two people do it in the other direction. I said, hmm, that's not a bad idea. But, um, you know, i- i- I, I wonder if, if, if that's a possibility.
Well, the good news is that the shoulders are pretty wide here when we mark these at ten-foot lanes. So I think if I'm, if my eyes aren't deceiving me, it's like a seven-foot shoulder. So you should be able to ride in.
In both directions?
Both directions.
Okay, that would be good. Um, and the, the, the primary danger that I witnessed today was, uh, cars, uh, headed toward the tracks on Cross Street, coming around that corner at, at excessive speed. And in one case, uh, chirped the tires to stop for pedestrian that I was watching, cross on the, on the, um, crosswalk, even though the flashers were going. Um, so where, in front of the vet where you have it crosshatched?
Yep.
Ki- would it possibly help to make, uh, that a sharper corner? I know you're trying to push the corner to make it sharper, but could it, could you possibly do it more to slow the cars down that are coming down there and also straighten out their sightline so they can see the crosswalk earlier?
You're talking about.
Right in there.
Sharpening this out?
Yeah, sharpening is.
Or, or building this out?
Just, this, this is street, right?
Yep.
So, so if the lane came straighter like this?
Yeah.
And sharper, forcing people to slow down.
Yeah, this is back to the, uh, the truck turn issue. And then this corner has all the, um, the drainage on the corner. So we'd have to run.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, uh, get rid of that pavement. I'm saying move the center line and the whole thing. I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest a solution.
If you could explain how you are moving the center line.
I'm asking the question.
Under this design? Is the center line on Cross Street is moving, right?
Um, not.
Not so much on that area? Okay.
Not a lot, no.
Okay.
Is, is it? The dotted lines here for, for the left turn, I mean, is it possible to, can something sort of push those up a little bit so that people don't feel they have a wide? That's a very wide.
That's what I'm saying. That was my observation.
It, it could almost fit a rotary. I mean, you should rule that out, but like, you could do it probably if you borrowed just a little.
So that will be striped as a ten-foot lane all the way through that intersection now, right? So that'd be the, the new green area, which would be a new bump out with new curbing, then a solid white line, and then a ten-foot lane. So it will be smaller, physically smaller than what it is today.
And, and honestly, we tried to make this even wider. Um, there are some taper restrictions. You kind of needed to like align with the parking. Um, and obviously trucks need to be accommodated. And when they turn out, you know, sometimes they need some of this space. Uh, it would have gone wider, but then you're, again, impacting drainage, the way the water flows on Cross Street. It kind of goes this way. And we needed it to be able to run across it without, uh, you know, if you have a big jut out, that's when you can get ponding and.
Yep. And then another question is.
Roger, you get one more question.
One more. Um, the, the, um, um, now you got me flustered here. Um, the, the, what are they called? Uh, shoot, safety zones. Have, have you considered making this whole thing a safety zone with a, a twenty mile an hour speed limit? Uh, because it seems to me it qualifies on, on every, not a school safety zone, a, a, uh, what are they called, Beth?
So when they're, when the new, um, townwide twenty-five mile per hour regulations went into place, there's a second piece of that law that allowed communities to adopt, just as you said, twenty mile per hour safety zones are not necessarily school zones, but they're, but they're adjacent to recreational facilities or, um, you know, the, the.
Vulnerable populations, like a thousand, uh, uh, pedestrians and bicyclists a day crossing a street with thirteen hundred, uh, cars a day.
Do you have any, uh, zones in town, safety zones in town?
We, we don't. We had talked about trying to do one like at Ginfields. Uh, we had a couple areas. We, I think actually probably this was one of the ones.
Pretty thorough study, actually.
Yeah.
They don't. And then that's, that's something, again, we should push back.
I think we've disagreed on this in the past.
Yeah, I know, we've disagreed on it. But I, but I've talked to state reps. I've talked to, uh, Mass Department, uh, of Transportation. And again, I think we should be pushing on this on every intersection of the bike path and major streets.
So I'll just say, I think our experience has been, um, that the twenty, you know, the reduced speed limit signage is helpful, but the physical geometric changes, like adding the speed humps, reducing the lane widths, has really been the most impactful. So I think whether or not it's a speed zone, we're trying to get those reduced speeds.
It's all in the right direction and people are getting better and better, uh, behaving.
Thank you. Yeah, I think typically I would say signage is probably the, the lowest use, usefulness of, of impact. And then you kind of get into markings, I think, can be the next iteration. And then physical, physical changes in terms of impact to speed.
All right. So I see you want to come up. Anybody else planning to speak tonight? Three more people? Is that right? Okay, come on up.
My name's Earl Hogg and I live at seventy-seven Brookside. I, uh, take my son to school at Morocco and I take my other son to school at PSA, which is on Cross Street here. So I'm pretty familiar with intersections. Uh, one thing that comes to mind, when you talked about, uh, this, uh, putting in a, a traffic signal at Cross and Forest and said that wasn't workable because it would cause a backup queue to the community greenway, why can't we consider the option of moving the crossing of the community greenway to align with Cross and Forest, which is where it should be in the first place with a signal?
Um, so a signal is not actually warranted, which would, it's, I don't know if the word illegal is correct.
Okay, maybe not warranted, but it's, but it's, but if we moved it, that would alleviate the safety concern about backups there, right?
Uh, it, it is of my opinion that you would be moving the desire line for the trail over, over to accommodate vehicular in some form. So I would prefer to leave it where it is, which is more aligned with where the, where the greenway is today.
But it's already misaligned, right? There's one, the, the entrance is at that green section there, right? Which is right across.
It's aligned on one side and not on the other.
Right, so we just.
But closer than where, if you're over here, you're not, you're getting further away.
But I'm saying we can move it right to where it's aligned with the other side and change nothing. Except then you could add a signal and actually make it a safe intersection there, rather than having two nasty intersections within five hundred feet of each other.
That would be fairly set back, back from a signal if you had this here.
The driveway is there.
Yeah, and this, yeah.
No, I'm talking about like at, at Forest and Cross. Put the crossing at Forest and Cross and put a light there.
So you guys looked at the traffic signal?
Yeah, signal's not warranted, like not even close. And, uh, and I would not recommend moving the greenway crossing further from the desire line.
What determines whether a signal is warranted?
Uh, mostly vehicular volume. You can get into a little bit more than that, but.
I can't imagine more vehicular volume at five P M. I just can't. Like, it's insane. And they, they go, you say twenty-eight miles an hour, they go fifty miles an hour through that intersection regularly.
There probably, um, there probably are a lot of people that do that, but that's not the average.
Okay, well, one person hit my kid. It may not be the average, but I mean, that's, like, we have seen multiple people hit by cars in that intersection. I'm, I'm glad we make room for Amazon trucks, but people are literally being hit by cars every day. Anyway, so, okay, we can't do that. The, uh, the issue of parking on the north side, on both sides, the car, the cars, I, I walk my kids to school. I can't walk them on the sidewalk because cars are parked on the sidewalk because, because they park on the sidewalk, because there's no room to fit on the, on Cross Street. They're worried about being hit. So, A, pushing, narrowing the street's just going to make that worse. There's no room for two-side parking there. And, and residents don't, I can tell you as a resident, we don't want it. I, maybe the veterinary wants it because they don't have parking, because they use their lot for employees and not customers. But we don't need do two-side parking there and it's dangerous. And it, it kills the sightlines. It absolutely kills sightlines.
We're actually widening, um, this stretch of road right here to accommodate the parking. So it's not being narrowed. The, the lanes that are being painted are narrowed. Uh, but we're actually widening the curbs a little bit out so that the cars can be accommodated. And then we're putting in curbing on both sides so that they can't mount it. It'll be, you know, absolutely.
That, that's great. I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're putting in curbing. That's, that's wonderful, but.
And then hopefully they're not blocking sidewalks.
And then, do we, are we going to restore the area across from the ballet where, how the ballet people park constantly across that? And also curb that? Is that's right?
Are we curbing the gymnastics academy?
Gymnastics? No, the, the, the next building. Yeah. So that, I mean, it's completely destroyed by cars and trucks parking there every day. And you can't, you can't even walk on that sidewalk.
I'm currently recommending it, but I think, I know that Matt was running the numbers on the budget, so that was kind of a, if we can do it.
Yeah, where.
It's not even a sidewalk at this point, it's just a crater.
Yeah.
How much of a budget impact would that be, though?
Well, the only expenditures I have.
Okay.
So you were saying you're, we'll get more space for par- where is this? Are we moved, are we taking space from businesses or what? I'm fine with that, but I just, I want to know where the space is coming from.
Like that green space in the apron on the side of the road is where that additional space is coming from.
That will become sidewalk and become parking?
Yes. We're not really adding or subtracting parking overall. We're just reclaiming what sidewalk that people were parking on.
I wish we could track parking from one side. Because, I mean, you, you go through, you look at the, the lots are half-empty, but the streets are full because people just park on the street instead of going to the lot. There, we don't need parking on both sides of that road. And it makes it a really dangerous situation. I may get disagreed with for that, but that's my opinion for that.
Yeah, yeah, I think ultimately we've heard both, we've both heard both things. So it's, you know, try to make it as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name is Eliza Hanley and I live at, um, eighty-five Brookside Ave. Um, so I was reviewing the plans and thrilled to see some speed humps going in. Um, uh, two of my kids attend Morocco and my third comes along, um, to, to get the kids to and from school. Uh, we usually bike or walk or whatever. Um, and most of the year, too, when we can. Um, so I guess, so I, I live on Brookside, which is just off of Forest, right there at the corner. So I should have looked a little closer at the key, but I thought those like, um, marks when you're coming off Forest onto Cross were bump outs. So I'm disappointed to hear that it's only painting because, um, people come around that, they come off of Forest to turn onto Cross at such a high rate of speed that they, I find that those are the vehicles that mostly don't stop at the blinking crosslight, um, when it's activated. So, um, I understand the, the constraints with doing a bump out, but, um, I guess I would echo the, um, the thought of those like yellow posts that could go in or something to slow people, cause, um, it just seems like it's kind of like a rolling stop right onto Cross. Um, and then I guess coming from, uh, the Leonard Fields side of the bike path, and then you take the left to go to the blinking crosslight, um, you know, it's a sidewalk there, but there's like no protection from the road. And I have got a little guy that bikes. And like sometimes I like hold my breath, like, please don't fall off the sidewalk, cause you're just like right onto the road. Um, and it's a little bit terrifying with the people turning out of the soccer complex. Um, and it just feels like there's very little pedestrian or biker protection when you're on that strip of sidewalk. So I didn't know if, um, I don't have the correct name for it, but those yellow posts that you see sometimes near bike paths or whatever could be considered for that. You know, I know there is the white line that protects you, but, I mean, people try to, and if they can tell someone's taking a left onto Forest, they try to kind of, you know, skim beside them on the right. And then they're, they're right up on the sidewalk. So I didn't know if that could be considered, um, for that area. And then, um, I think, um, John, you mentioned, why can't Forest be a do not enter? I think that was a while ago, but I guess I, I wondered the same. Like, you know, you see in neighboring towns, or I can't even think if there's any in Winchester, but it says like do not enter between the hours of, you know, certain hours of the day, because it, it very much is a cut through. I live right on the corner of Forest and Brookside. And it's amazing to see and hear the traffic differences depending on like the commuting hours. Um, and of course, there is the, um, the traffic light up at the top of Cross in Washington. And it seems kind of under, underused. So I guess I wondered what the process would be to consider that a do not enter. And what, you know, residence only or however it's phrased, but, um, because, and I, uh, my neighbor next to me crosses her granddaughter at the, um, kind of what people were saying, they cross up by, um, the gymnastics academy or the trash facility, you know, and she, she completely avoids the whole blinking crosslight, cause it's just car, I know you mentioned the average rate of speed, but I, I find that hard to believe with some of the, the encounters we've had. I know that it's an average, but, um, people travel at such a high rate of speed and it's, the, when the crosslight is activated, it's even still, and I try to drill into my kids' head, like do not stop unless you've, you physically have seen that vehicle stop, which, you know, can go for any crosswalk anywhere. But, um, I'm really encouraged to see some speed bumps or humps, whatever you call them, going in there to hopefully slow the speed. But I was just wondering if some of those other things could be considered. Um, and my husband loves roundabouts. I know they're different than rotaries. And he wanted to ask about a roundabout for this Cross Street, Forest Street. So I told him I would, um, I would ask.
We did geometrically lay it out and it's.
I saw that in your proposal. With that extra land there that you mentioned, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, the right-of-way lines just don't make it fit. Like, there's a lot of different requirements around with, uh, the reason it's a roundabout and not a rotary and something that, you know, you make fun of Sims Corner for what it looks like and is, uh, you want to kind of have, you want approach vehicles to kind of have this opportunity to, to kind of come in at a ninety-degree and then turn. And that requires all the approaches to have these kind of angular entrances, um, into the circle, which when you start laying that out, it's bigger than, than what that looks like.
Okay.
What you don't want is a Sims Corner. So we're doing them different now, so.
Erica, with the, um, some of the roundabouts, you can actually kind of drive over them, but it's like cobblestone or something like that?
Yeah.
It's raised. I mean, would that be something that wouldn't, you know, fit there, even if we took that green area out and we put it?
I could look at something like that.
Yeah.
Cause there in, um, Somerville has a lot of them now.
Yeah.
I was driving recently through a neighborhood in Somerville that.
I think it does.
It was kind of a tight intersection, but it was like, yeah, that cobblestone thing.
Yeah.
It slows, slows you down, definitely. But it's still, if it's a truck that, you know, needs the space, they can, they slow down, but they can, their wheels can go over it.
Yeah.
So, and I mean, especially, you're only going to have a truck coming from taking a right onto Forest Street.
Well, again, the, the trucks we were looking at are not the same as, like we talked about Cross and Holton has, you know, those businesses off of that that need to, these are pretty small trucks that are.
I mean, things coming under here is like a landscaping truck.
Yeah.
From, from there, that's the only thing that's taking a, a left there. Every, any other, or Amazon, I guess you're saying, right? But like, any larger truck is there either because they have specific business or they're, I, I think a lot of them honestly are there by accident.
Yeah, I've seen, yeah, I've seen them. I've seen them turning around in the sport complex.
Yep.
So the only thing I would, um, obviously we can have Erica look at whatever we want. We're just kind of under a timeline here. If we want to have EverSource try to do any of the work while they're restoring, they own a lot of work at the vet. And so if we want to explore a roundabout option, that's, that would set us back from being able to get any of this done as part of the EverSource. So I just want the board to understand that, that kind of the, the timeline we were aiming for was try to get some, um, consensus tonight to at least make some of these improvements while EverSource is out there. Not to say that we can't go in a different direction, but just want to lay that on the table for your consideration.
That's helpful.
And certainly the, you know, the idea of kind of those temporary materials, I think that that could, that's something that can be added and talked about fairly quickly. So that's something that can be nimble on, or you could always go in and add, um, after EverSource comes, comes through as well.
Is, is EverSource able to, you know, just give us the money for the, you know, the project if they're not, if we make changes to it? Or is it?
No, I mean, they, they, obviously we all know there was a big hole at the corner with the vet. And before they can pave, they have to do some significant restoration out there. So it's not something they can just like write us a check to do that work, I don't think. Um, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I think you're it, Ms. Conti. So come on up. Thank you. And I think you're it, Ms. Conti, so come on up.
Hi again, Laura Conti, Highland View Ave. So I wanted to know, when you did the average speed, was that like in the past, how recent was that? When was that?
That was during the twenty-twenty study.
Okay, so presumably the road was in better condition than it is now. Okay. I also find that average hard to believe as somebody who lives there and, and sees it. And I wonder about exploring if we qualify for a school zone there, given its proximity to Morocco via the bike path. It may not be a driving road, but, or if not the community.
I think it's outside of the school zone area, but the safety zone.
But, but the other one, I would encourage the board to, to look into the safe zone. Cars are, are often going too fast to see us, so, you know, I cross at the flashing beacon twice a day with my three kids going to Morocco School and oftentimes cars will fly by us and they'll say, oops, you know, didn't see you. And that's clear, they're clearly traveling too fast in that case, right? When the light's flashing in there, they're still saying, oops. So I was wondering what the project budget is for this and the funding source? When you were mentioning, you know, possibly maybe skipping the curbing on one area, I think that would be very short-sighted as somebody who's struggled to get by on the sidewalks with cars parked on them. So if you leave areas for people to jump the curb, they're gonna do it. And I think the children and families traveling on Cross Street have suffered enough over the last three years and we need like actual curbs to prevent parking on the sidewalk. It's just, it happens the whole length of Cross Street, but especially in this area. And then lastly, if, you know, we've heard a lot of residents say that crossing Forest Street at that crosswalk is challenging. And if we can't remediate that, could a second crosswalk go in, in, in where they're jaywalking to make it a legal crossing there is my question. Thank you.
So I think we heard that we are gonna put the curb in. Yep. As related to a crosswalk, I'm not sure when, we expect Eversource to be completing that, but that's something I think the board can look at and consider. And I'm not sure I know the budget number, but maybe Matt does.
So we estimate we have roughly two hundred fifty thousand dollars between the Eversource funds and the River Street funds to finish the design of this work, potentially bid it out, also do the improvements at Holton and Cross Street, as well as the rapid flashing beacon at Kirk Street, Cross and Kirk.
Okay.
Erica.
Yes.
So sat through enough of these presentations and, you know, we try to engineer out traffic. But to me, it strikes me that a lot of this is behavioral.
Yep.
In that it's an enforcement issue. Because I've been hit almost a couple of times over in front of Ginfield and speeding and we can put up all the signs we want, but until we pull people over and give them a ticket for two hundred dollars and we do that over and over again. And maybe that's, is that a fleeting kind of thing? Like if you do that and that just is, you're inoculated for nine months and all of a sudden you're getting terrorized again by a bunch of people flying through your neighborhood, you know, what's, what does that say?
I think it's a multi-pronged approach, right?
Yes.
And I think enforcement is one of the tools that you have. But I don't know that, you know, you probably can't be funding that to be happening all over town all the time. You have to be really thoughtful about where you end up and where the enforcement's taking place and, you know, sort of being systemic about it. I, my intention with a lot of these designs, the best you can do within the guidelines of engineering, you know, protocols, is to have self-enforcing designs. So things like speed humps and tight turning radii, like tight corners and good sightlines, those are all things that encourage slower speeds, encourage better behavior. You're more apt to yield for pedestrian if you can see them and if, like even if you're making eye contact, you're even better about it. So the intention here is to improve sightlines and have this be more of a self-enforcing design. And hopefully people will slow down because of the things that are, that are being incorporated here. I think we're really trying to make the, the area work the way that, that it kind of, it's doing it on its own and it's not working well, right? Like people are popping the curbs, the sidewalks are really uncomfortable to walk along. Cars are blocking your view for crosswalks. We're hoping to improve all of that with, with this design.
So it's almost counterintuitive that as you narrow a street, that it becomes safer, right? Especially because I think my kids run between cars.
And it's, and it's fighting like old engineering, which is, which is, oh, make the design speed higher then and then, you know, smooth out the curves, right? And then it's safer and then people just go faster. So.
Yep.
We're kind of, this whole traffic calming phenomenon is something that has kind of come up over, I don't know, my, my career.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and we are changing things that used to, that we used to think were safe, that we're finding we're not. That's why all these, all these curb lines are all really wide. Like the intersections, you'll just notice they open up like, and, and there's really no rhyme or reason behind it. We were accommodating, you know, WB sixty-sevens, massive big rigs everywhere. Now we're finding that that's really not safe for people that are on foot, so. Slowly but surely with, with the funding that you got, kind of starting to be systemically thoughtful about where you can improve those things.
Okay.
So I just wanted to add, there was a neighbor from the area who wasn't able to join, who had previously submitted a traffic request about this intersection, so you probably had seen that. But there, they were crossing the street and their dog was hit in, on that Forest Street part. And submitted a request with about a signatures from over eighty people and, and around the neighborhood. So we had a handful of folks today, but it's also like a broader, well-used intersection. I think the, like, the Cross Street and Greenway crossings, I think are great with the speed humps. I think that will help a lot because when, like, those cars are gonna have to slow down to see you cross. This is not, probably not a you thing, but a us thing, is the, the field has two entrances. Some people use one to come in, some people use the other one to come in and go out. And so I also wonder if something like just working with them to say, can we designate like one is in?
Oh, the soccer complex, is that what you're talking about?
It was permitted that way and I have let them know several times that there's not supposed to be any exit from the driveway closest to.
The railroad bridge.
Railroad bridge. That was the intention of how the ZBA approved it, that it was.
It's very difficult to do the way the traffic pattern is there and where the parking is to go out that way, but.
I've just seen people sort of choose your adventure.
Yes.
I, I think, I mean, to me, I think like the Cross Street improvements are really helpful. I've always felt that that Forest Street crossing is, is the most dangerous part of, of getting there. And I just wonder like if we had a, like, what's our, what's our wishlist? What's our, we've had, there was a hole, like massive hole in the ground right there from Eversource for months that was ill-repaired and was, you know, just rerouting traffic and all this other stuff. Like can, can we ask them for a race crosswalk? Can we put a beacon there? Because you said like it's, most important is to be seen. You are not seen when you are crossing that street. The drivers turning left, they don't see you until they're on top of you. And so I just wonder like, how can you increase visibility for pedestrians at, at that point? Because the, sort of the, I mean, what I'm seeing is it's really like the lines and trying to avoid some of that curb parking, but it's, you know, I don't think it's doing as much to make it visible that there's somebody crossing. And that's like a, you know, it's a pretty narrow corner there by the condos. But people, you know, are there.
So what's just pushing up farther, Forest Street? Is there, is there a design that says you have to be right there?
Uh, yeah, it's, it has to do with the trucks. And, yeah, this is, this is actually out a little bit and we did actually look at building it out and couldn't do it, so. And a big part of that is.
Is there one more person in the audience who wants to talk tonight? And then I think we're gonna close the public hearing and.
And then with the condos right there and the steps, it'd be extremely challenging to have that be ADA compliant on the corner.
I'm going to tell them it can follow up towards Woburn, that way, up Forest Street that way. Push it away so you have more visibility as you come around the corner.
Oh, uh, no, I mean, you, you really wanna provide the ability for people to walk along Cross Street and traverse along Cross Street and continue, so you can't really remove the crossing.
No, no, I'm talking about move it, move it up. Move it, if you move it, what's that?
Uh, yeah, so it's actually, you kind of don't really want, you want lefts to be able to see them right here. It's not intuitive to be there and that's when you start speeding up, you don't want it further back, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Mooney. I live at thirty-two Forest Street and I've been there over fifty years. And Forest Street, lower end of Forest Street has changed so much in certainly that time. The speed of traffic going down, they go through the signal lights at Washington Street. They keep going at a high rate of speed, take the corner where Brookside is and then out to Cross Street. And I remember there were no trucks on either end. The trucks couldn't use Forest Street. I think Forest Street is used, I think, more than Cross Street, the higher end of Cross Street. We have buses, hospital buses, which I hope when this is all done, we're not gonna have buses. They always used to do Cross Street and I, they stopped with the, all the, you know, Eversource and all that. But we shouldn't have a bus. Every, every couple of seconds, there's buses up and down Forest Street. That's crazy. It's still a small street. And I just feel as though we take more of the brunt on Forest Street, the lower end, that they do on the higher end of Cross Street. And it never used to be that way, but now it's a cut-through.
When you say the higher end of Cross Street, do you mean?
Well, like, yeah, like from the vets up to the signal lights.
Washington Street, yeah.
Up to Washington. And that used to be the main street, but it's, seems to be Forest Street now. Buses, trucks, we got everything going fast. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I wanna close the public hearing and then the, the board can still, I think, debate and if there's a motion we need to have, but don't go anywhere just yet, Matt and Erica. So discussion on the design or any additional questions from Matt and Erica before I let them go back into the other seats, but.
So Matt, is, is there more design work to be done here? Because it sounded like there was. You still have some things to work out and we have a meeting in two weeks, so maybe we should see what you come back with so we can.
I think the design would be in terms of trying to get something ready for construction, not necessarily refinement or changes to the plan.
I, I think we can have a little bit more of a conversation to see if there's anything we can do to focus on that pedestrian safety at the corner of Forest and Cross. I don't think it's necessarily gonna be like new curbing, which I think was what we've all wanted and certainly when we've used other engineering firms in the past and we looked at the Forest Street quarter years ago when I was town engineer, we had the same exact conversation and we kind of ended up in the same place. But I think there are some things, flex posts or other things that we can do. Hard and center lines, other things we can do to try to take into consideration those real safety concerns we've heard tonight to, to try to improve that.
So then should we then take this back up on the, on the seventeenth and vote sort of?
I mean, I think the.
We can vote this design sort of with some additional improvements or?
I think if, if we hear from the board tonight that the concept with some additional safety improvements at that Forest Street crossing is something that you're kind of feel generally good about, then we can take that to the next step. And if, if you'd like us to come back on the seventeenth to kind of say what maybe those next improvements would be, we can do that as well.
Okay, so I'll leave that for the board to decide whether we sort of move forward with an update in two weeks or we just hold for two weeks. But see what the board sort of will or wishes. Mike and Bill, additional questions for Matt and Erica?
I share a lot of the concerns that the public have already shared. And it seems to me that a lot of what we would like to do is limited by both geometry and utility needs. I think you guys did a really good, you guys did also the bumpouts at Bike Lincoln School and also on Wildwood and that area.
Yeah, Wildwood and McCall.
Yeah. Those are incredibly annoying, which I mean to be incredibly successful.
As a driver, right?
Yes, which, by which I mean they are successful. And, you know, I'm not an engineer. I would think if a truck can make those turns, we could do something here as well. But if there's the added challenge of things like drainage and utility poles that didn't exist at that Lincoln School intersection and the Wildwood intersection, that's kind of what is limiting us here. But I do wanna make sure that we explore every option for pedestrian safety, cyclist safety, everything else. Because as, as somebody who, you know, I walk my kids to school every day in a different area of town, I know how important that is. I mean, Main Street is a worry for me every day in that sense. I bike around here pretty often as well and this is always very, very confusing. And I always get spooked when cars come around that, that turn and I can't see them until the last minute. So I think we're heading in the right direction, but, you know, I'm all for measuring twice, cutting once and making sure that we get the best solution we can here. And if two weeks is not gonna kill us, then I'd like to take advantage of it.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of the conversations that we have with Eversource in terms of their timing for things. We just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I don't wanna lose that.
Yeah.
So if that's not a problem, I wanna make sure we explore everything we can.
But Eversource has tortured us for like five years. And all of a sudden we're kowtowing to them, are we gonna meet their schedule? No, we don't. I mean, maybe we do, but I mean, but one, right?
They're not gonna meet their schedule.
Right, exactly.
If that's true, in this, in this two weeks is a, is an imaginary deadline, then we should definitely, I think, look for more, yeah.
Well, I think we have the ability to, you know, spin up a quick call if we need to. If for some reason, some deadline is suddenly real from Eversource, we can have a meeting before the seventeenth for a half an hour and, and authorize Beth and Matt and Erica to do what they need to to proceed with some design. But I, I think if we wanna wait two weeks, we should. And you'll let us know if there's something more urgent that somehow needs a decision. I mean, seems unlikely, but hey, there's a lot of things we didn't think we'd see, so it could happen. All right? Any other questions? And I thank the folks in the public who spoke and had their neighbors speak and go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Michelle. Let me brief, thank you. I mean, I know that this is, as Bill said, is a very difficult intersection that we've heard. I, I am, you know, surprised that this didn't warrant signalizing the intersection. I, I just, and I think a lot of people avoid this area because of the Eversource, you know, project that's been going on for a while. Just mentally, they, you know, go a different direction around to, you know, so I think that in the neighborhood, I think a lot of people feel the constant traffic that's been there for the years and the volume. I mean, I, I don't know where else we have this much kind of traffic volume. And so I, I mean, I, I, if signalization is, is an option, you know, and it's, it's close with the numbers, I don't know where it is, but, you know, I'd like to have that conversation and certainly, you know, to, to John's point as well. You know, enforcement is important for us. I think that we probably need to have an enforcement strategy for that area. Crosswalks make me nervous as well because I think a lot of people are distracted, you know, going through crosswalks. And not just kids, I mean, certainly my kids, but also me, right? So I mean, I'm crossing the street and trying to get something done on my phone and there's a sense that when you're in a crosswalk, you're safe and you're not, especially in this area. So I think, you know, people slowing down, if they, if the road slows them down, the infrastructure slows them down. If, you know, an officer, you know, is there at certain times and slows them down, great. And, you know, anything else that we can do to, to do it. Because we've, we've done some great things there, having the Winchester Community Park there has attracted a lot more traffic, a lot more use and a lot of more pedestrians. The Tri-Community Bike Way, same thing. So we've, we've exacerbated the problem in a good way. And so, you know, I don't, I don't mind investing here to get this done, right? I think we've heard that from everybody here. You know, I just don't know what that, what that will, that will take. But, you know, I, I do realize there's a process where, you know, in order to justify certain, you know, infrastructure improvements, we have to meet certain guidelines. So I'm, I'm sensitive to that. But, but I, I, I don't think that the neighborhood deserves us kind of tinkering this, with this very much longer. I think everybody wants it to be done right and I don't want the, you know, frankly, any more, you know, money that we need to, design work or, you know, anything to be, I don't want that to get in the way of, of getting the right solution, so.
Yeah, I got a question. Did you say that survey was done in twenty-twenty though? The traffic survey?
The traffic counts I got were, were recently, but the, the speeds I got were in twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty?
Yeah.
But it was.
But the volumes were recent.
Okay. Well, I only ask that because COVID took place in twenty-nineteen and there was nobody on the road in twenty-twenty.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 yeah, the, the counts are from in the last six months.
Yeah, and, and the other piece of that too, and we've seen this in other areas around town where, you know, the bad condition of the road is, actually contributes to safety. So on the other side, you know, we've seen.
You gotta go slower, sadly.
So it's just the way that it is. And so once we pave and we make it nice, it's, it, there is even a little bit more of a risk there if the infrastructure. risk there if the infrastructure isn't.
When we did the corridor study back in 2019, you collected counts and, and volume data then as well.
Yes, yeah, volumes from then and then I got volumes here again.
And we can always have Mr. Wilson share his counts if we need them from today.
Keep getting them, just keep getting them, every day. We want daily counts, Roger.
It is correct that the Forest Street volume is about the same as the upper part of.
Cross Street.
Cross Street. So that's why people would like cross there and maybe there should be another crosswalk opposite, in front of the vets.
We can look at that. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right. Now, moving on to our business. Thanks. So MS4, are they here?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Thanks, Erica. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Night.
Wow. I wasn't sure who's what. Go right ahead if you'd like. Thank you.
Yeah. Hello, Dree Schwartz from Weston Sampson. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. So we're here to provide kind of our annual update on the town's compliance with their MS4 permit.
Matt, you didn't go far.
So just kind of a little background for anyone who may not be familiar with this permit. So basically, this is a federal permit through EPA and it's been around for a long time now, actually. I think we're in the 21st year of this permit at this point. So it basically regulates point source stormwater discharges to waters of the United States. It covers all of the municipal stormwater infrastructure in town. That includes drain pipes, manholes, catch basins, outfalls where stormwater discharges to receiving waters, any kind of stormwater treatment structures that the town has in place. So this, the current permit that the town is covered under became effective July 1st, 2018. It actually, generally these permits are five-year permits, but this one was supposed to be effective in 2017, it was bumped out a year. So it actually expired on June 30th, 2022 and the town's coverage under the permit has been administratively continued at this point. We're currently in permit year six of the permit. We're coming up at the very end of that, at the end of this month. We are waiting and expecting a new draft permit from EPA. They're saying late 2024, so we'll see what happens. There are basically kind of six main elements of this permit. So these, these control measures that we're going to kind of walk through tonight to talk about, you know, the town's compliance with the permit and progress under these, these individual measures. Basically, the belief is that by implementing best management practices under each of these measures, that it will improve overall stormwater quality. So since, I think, 2018, we've had a written stormwater management plan. The town, basically, it's a living document. We updated annually with the town to document compliance with the permit. Record keeping is very important under this permit. Obviously, EPA does audit communities for compliance with the permit, so of course we want to have all of our records in order, so. But, you know, the stormwater management provides a nice overview of, of the permit requirements, all of the compliance initiatives and any progress to date. So we're actually just finishing up some updates for year six and anticipate that being posted to the town's website by June 10th.
So could I stop you here?
Oh, sure.
I have a question for Bob. So Bob, on INI is, do we not get meted on stormwater discharge?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you.
The town has done a lot, especially over the past six years or so, as it relates to public education and outreach. There's a lot of useful information on the town's website, in the town manager's newsletter. Under the permit, the town was required to provide specific public education messaging to various target audiences, residential, commercial, industrial developers. There's also specific messages related to certain water quality impairments that we'll talk a little bit about as they relate to particularly phosphorus. So, and then also exceedances of bacteria. So, you know, a lot of that kind of ties into, and there's a chloride impairment as well. So, so all the messaging we're seeing here kind of ties in with, with those impairments and that's, this is the annual messaging that's required. But again, lots of great information on the town's website. Public participation and involvement is also a big element of the permit. I know Beth mentioned the Household Hazardous Waste Products Collaborative that's currently in place, which allows residents to dispose of hazardous waste, I believe, on like a monthly basis at this point, which is great. There was a recent Aborigon River cleanup day. The town continues to participate in the Mystic River Steering Committee meetings as well. And again, we provide the stormwater management plan that, that we talked about will be posted on, hopefully on June 10th and, and available for usually a two-week kind of comment period as well. And also, you know, annually, we report on compliance to EPA by filing annual reports with the town. Those are generally due at the end of September. More recent initiative that the town has undertaken is the Adopt a Drain Program. So there's information available on, on the town's website regarding that, but basically, you know, a resident or property owner can adopt one of the catch basins and commit to, you know, keeping that catch basin clean. Obviously, that provides flood mitigation benefits and water quality benefits. And, you know, it, it helps, obviously helps in terms of, you know, the level of effort that the DPW has to provide on a regular basis to, to keep catch basins clear, to have that, that actual participation. One of the bigger initiatives and more of the, I guess, one of the more costly initiatives for compliance with the permit has been the illicit discharge detection and elimination requirements. So this is about concern about non-stormwater discharges getting into the town's drainage system, whether that be from the sanitary sewer or other sources of, of non-stormwater. And so under the permit, the town has been required to take part in a very kind of comprehensive program investigating the town's drainage system. So all of those, all of the catchment areas, the drainage infrastructure that goes to those individual outfalls that discharge the receiving waters, we've been assisting the town with basically opening up drain manholes, kind of inspecting, looking for flow, trying to sandbag and isolate flow and test flow and looking if they exceed certain, certain parameters. There's more likely evidence that there could be kind of a, kind of sewer input into the drainage system at that location. And so we use various methodologies to try to target the potential source of that, that non-stormwater discharge. We're also doing kind of wet weather outfall screening and sampling at all of the town's regulated outfalls and there's about 150 outfalls that we've been targeting. So that's been an ongoing process. So the, the two, those two bulleted items, basically, the town has until end of permit year 10 to complete that, so we've got another four years to kind of wrap that up. But the town has, has made great strides with those, with those two items. We also do annual training on how to identify illicit discharges and that's to municipal employees. We actually have our training coming up at the end of this week for that, for that work. With respect to the annual report, there's a lot of tracking related to construction site runoff control, so management of stormwater activities, kind of that impact stormwater quality during construction. The town is required to annually report the number of site plan reviews that have been completed, the number of inspections that have been completed at construction sites and any enforcement actions that are taken. So those are all tracked and reported. On the post-construction stormwater management front, the town did, we put together a couple of different reports that looked at the creation of kind of impervious cover. It's called the Street Design and Parking Lot Report, looking for opportunities to reduce the amount of impervious cover and obviously the amount of runoff and improving water quality. And so there were some recommendations that were included as part of that report. We're still looking to kind of move some of those recommendations forward with some potential regulatory updates. There's also a green infrastructure report too as well that looks for the opportunity to incorporate, you know, green infrastructure best management practices as part of, as part of the regulations as well. So going forward on those two items, again, probably be circling back with Planning Board, looking to see what, you know, what updates might be viable there to kind of move forward with for implementation. We also have, there's a BMP retrofit inventory report that's kept annually. And again, that's basically looking at any municipal facilities, roadway improvements, any work that the town has planned, maybe over the next five, 10 years, and opportunities to enhance stormwater management at those properties as part of that work. So there's not really a, per se, a requirement associated with that, but it's just knowing if you have a school where you're going to be doing improvements, that you're going to be looking at stormwater improvements as well as part of that, that work. And our last minimum control measure is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. Obviously, I feel the town has made great strides with their catch basin cleaning. You know, when we started, I think, early on with compliance, there was probably just a minimal number of catch basins that were being cleaned each year. Now the town has a contract that's put out to bid each year where about 1,000 catch basins are cleaned. In addition to that, the town has staff that has been regularly cleaning catch basins as well, so really good progress there. There's a certain requirement that, basically under the permit, that the sump of the catch basin can never be more than 50% full. So the town has been working to kind of track and capture that data so we can optimize cleaning. So in some cases, it might be that, you know, certain catch basins need to be cleaned twice annually to meet permit requirements. And so we're working, trying to kind of track and compile that information and get the program up and running. Also, sweeping of streets and municipal lots, that's a requirement that that has to be done twice annually as well. Also, all of the, the stormwater treatment structures that are municipally owned in town, those have to be inspected annually and maintained as needed. So we recently completed some inspections on that end. The last item here is a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So under the permit, waste handling facilities, including the public works facility, the transfer station, had to have a separate individual plan for, you know, preventing stormwater contamination on site. And so there's quarterly inspection requirements related to that and also annual training. And so we're also doing some more training on that this week as well.
Can I ask Bob a question? So Bob, do we get the vac truck?
Yeah, yeah, no.
When's that supposed to come?
Well, the new date is now October 1st.
So it's supposed to cut down on our work, cost using vendors to do the vacuum? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Bob.
Oh, no, no. Yeah. I was gonna say, under the catch basin cleaning contract that the town currently has, there's a certain amount of clamshell cleaning and vector cleaning for certain catch basins. So there's an allowance for that right now. We were talking earlier about kind of impaired waters. This again is a big kind of initiative for compliance under the permit. The Mystic River, Wedge Pond, Aborigon River, all impaired for phosphorus. So basically, the town was required to develop a townwide phosphorus source identification report, basically looking at estimating the phosphorus load contribution from different drainage catchment areas and then looking to prioritize opportunities to retrofit the existing drainage system where we have high phosphorus loadings to try to potentially infiltrate more of that stormwater and less stormwater be reaching the town's receiving waters. And so, you know, that plan is kind of something, again, that's kind of visited annually and updated. We're trying to, we need to report and back to EPA the amount of phosphorus that's being removed from certain BMPs that are being implemented as part of that effort.
And what is the cause of the phosphorus, phosphorus levels?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, I mean, different sources. We're, we know we're targeting like leaf litter collection, street sweeping, all of those kind of pollutants kind of contribute to the phosphorus loading.
Nut fertilizer?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's regulations in Massachusetts around, you know, phosphorus being present in fertilizers and stuff, so that's kind of hopefully limited, you know, that, that contribution. But it could be like failing septic systems if you have, you know, a lot of septic systems. I know you don't, guys don't have a lot, but. So, yeah, so right now, the town was fortunate enough to get some funding through the 319 grant program where they're able to, you know, install what we call some infiltration trenches. So basically, these trenches kind of take flow from an existing catch basin and redirect it into a perforated pipe and infiltrate that stormwater. So it's not going into the, it can go into the drainage system, but a certain amount first, kind of that first flush or so would go into these infiltration trenches and be infiltrated into the ground. So we actually have a contract currently out for public bid that includes installation of 11 infiltration trenches. And so those are slated to be constructed by September 30th. Bid opening is this Wednesday on that front. So that also helps. I mean, when we were looking at that, we were trying to prioritize incorporation of those infiltration trenches in some of these high phosphorus loading kind of catchment We've also been working on a chloride reduction plan. So the Aborigon River has a chloride impairment that was something new that kind of came out as an impairment during the course of this kind of latest five-year permit iteration. And so next phase would be kind of move toward finalizing and then implementation of that chloride reduction plan as well. So again, records and reporting is a big requirement of this permit. And again, we're hoping to have that stormwater management plan posted on the town website for public comment by June 10th. Our next annual report is due September 28th, so permit year again closes June 30th and then EPA comes out with a template that's kind of tailored to each year of the permit and that gets filed in September. And then again, just kind of, kind of looking ahead as to what's on the radar next. Again, we still have some wet weather sampling to do. I know we've probably got more than two-thirds of that completed, so we'll be looking to finish that up over the next few years. You know, we've, we've actually investigated most of the town's catchment areas. We just have some areas that we're continuing to kind of follow up, some areas of potential concern, a minimal number. Again, we talked about the recommendations from the impervious cover and green infrastructure reports. Again, looking to kind of meet with planning and try to move the needle and see if we can get some of those recommendations implemented. We talked about our catch basin cleaning, kind of data collection kind of efforts and stuff and optimization of cleaning, so we'll continue those efforts to, to meet that, that 50% sump full requirement. Continue to annually, annually inspect and maintain the town's stormwater treatment structures again as we continue to add to that. Obviously, that expands the level of effort required for that initiative. And continue our annual training. And we also do quarterly inspections at each of those, the DPW facility and the transfer station, so continuing with those, those items as well. You know, as we gear up for a new permit, we're definitely seeing a shift in permit requirements. You know, we're thinking that things are really going to transition to more of an implementation phase, more construction projects, more retrofit work. So that's one thing to kind of, that we're thinking about and trying to line ourselves up for some more, kind of design, more, more projects that are ready for construction. We talked about, you know, starting implementation of the chloride reduction plan. And then, again, with the new permit pending, hopefully at the end of the year, you know, it'll be out for public comment, so there'll be an opportunity for the town to comment on the requirements of the permit. And also, of course, I mean, the first thing we usually like to look to do is, is assess what are the compliance needs under the permit, what is it going to cost the town to comply going forward and what is, you know, what is funding, what are the funding needs, what does that look like for the town? So.
Thank you. So I'm curious, what kind of public comment do we get when we put this out there for public comment?
Oh, on the stormwater management plan?
Or, yes, so that would be posted.
I would say, yeah, it's been limited, it's been limited.
Trying to like, I would think not many, but like, what are we trying to derive, right? Like, is this the right drain approach? I'm not sure, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we're.
Maybe you don't get many, but.
Yeah, no, we're open, you know, to ideas about, of course, like public engagement. I mean, trying to interest folks in, in helping the town in their compliance initiatives and stuff too. And just, you know, I mean, have we gotten, I'm trying to think if we've gotten any questions probably.
I don't think we got any.
I mean, the questions I've received in the past are not specifically related to like. Stormwater. Right, in general. I think some documents are a little complicated.
Yeah, to kind of navigate. I guess, yeah.
It's like 300 pages long or something at this point, right? It's not like, it's not an, an easy read.
Fair enough.
It's all about water quality.
In the town manager's newsletter, it will be available. Thank you. Okay.
I was gonna say, the permit's all about water quality and I, I guess, when I'm thinking about in other communities, I think, you know, if there's concern about a receiving water, especially one that's, you know, that a, a resident might be utilizing, you know, for different reasons, for, you know, boating or, you know, there's maybe some more concern around like, well, what's water quality? What are you finding in your sampling results? That type of, type of stuff is usually kind of of interest.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you for those comprehensive update.
So I would just, funding wise, we currently pay for the Weston Sampson's permit services through our water and store retained earnings. And as you heard Dree say, as we transition into the next permit cycle, it sounds like there's going to be more construction-related needs. So it's just something for us to think about as we look at, you know, our five to 10-year horizon of projects. We couldn't continue to fund those sort of construction projects totally through retained earnings or there would be some sort of borrowing or if we were going to use capital funds or whatever. So it's just something for us.[1724.51]
What kind of construction projects?
I mean, I think we've, we've kind of tried, like you said, we've tried to kind of count some of the stuff we've done, like with Lynch School, we tried to kind of count that towards the projects. I don't know what you're seeing kind of in other communities, but if you look at the Charles River, so the, the Charles River watershed had a very different permit this last cycle than the Mystic River watershed did. And I don't know, Matt, you used, you worked in Watertown, which was part of the Charles River, but there, there was projections that there was going to be millions of dollars of investment to comply.
Yeah, so, some of the other communities that have the more stringent requirements are doing infiltration trenches or other BMPs out of their own budgets rather than getting grants. So that, but I think where, it's so early to tell what they're going to require from us, it's, it's all conjecture.
But if we don't comply, what happens?
EPA could sue us.
Get an enforcement order. You can't just not comply, right?
I'd like to think of Bill.
Well, no, you gotta, you always gotta know what the risk is. And if we, if we have to explain to people that we have to put money into these construction efforts, we have to explain to them why. And so...
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's any reporting, right? And at some point, if you're not keeping up, they'll come knock on your door.
I was gonna say, I mean, the way the permit reads, you know, it could be like up to fifty thousand dollars fine per day. Because I've, I've had, you know, communities ask, well, is it, is it less expensive just to not comply?
Right.
And get fined? And I will say, too, I mean, there are certain items right now that are on EPA's radar, because I've seen EPA recently reach out to communities. And one of the things they're focused on is the post-construction stormwater requirements, the regulatory updates. These are different from the ones I talked about tonight, but that were due back in permit year three. And so, the town is, you know, fully compliant with that. But there's still some communities that haven't, haven't made those updates. And so, EPA is reaching out and having meetings with their, their enforcement division and these communities. So, that, right now, that's kind of their focus.
Yeah, I, I think the, the issue is that some of the grant funding we've gotten, once it becomes, once these become MS4 permit requirements, that it's no longer eligible for some of that grant funding, which is counterintuitive, but that's just how, how it works. So...
Yeah, yeah. So we're fortunate with the 319 grant funding that you don't have a phosphorus control requirement right now. And we kind of get ahead a little bit with this funding and can take credit for it later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm thinking, we'll take up Mystic School HVAC next, but I was thinking for the board, let's go through some other sort of votes and then take up all of our various updates on capital and CPA and personnel. We'll sort of take that up at the end. So just gonna try to like go through a series of votes that we need, but we do want to hear next about Mystic School. And then we'll just jump around a little bit and then come back to our own internal housekeeping.
I think we need a heat pump cooling system in this room.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good.
Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having us.
So we have updated, from last Friday, updated design, updated some cost estimates. If you could maybe talk us through Pete, you know, what this updated design does in terms of, you know, what, what does it remediate, what does it address, which parts of the building are going to be impacted, maybe start there?
Sure.
And then we'll let the rest of us ask some questions.
We've all had a chance to look at the report. So, what this project does is it takes the core of the building, which is the hundred-year-old portion of the building, replaces the heat source and slash adds air conditioning to these classrooms by electrification. There's two options in there, which are either individual split units or VRFs, which would do multiple zone rooms. And in the proposal, it would then isolate out the steam piping, but not abandon it. So it would still be there in case of an emergency, we could use it, but that would isolate out that hundred-year-old piping and, and still allow for the steam to heat the, the newer portion of the building, which is the fifties vintage, which doesn't have the same amount of corrosion in the piping. This is a heating and air conditioning project. It's not a full-blown HVAC ventilation project. But that's what it does. It takes out that core area that we have so much problem with the, the piping. Gets rid of that risk in that area. And then also, it gives us more consistent heat and air conditioning in those areas. And that limits us to a smaller area to have to try and control and take care of on the old steam system, so.
So Pete, what, what percentage of the building is the hundred-year-old portion approximately? Is it like sixty percent and the rest is forty percent?
Yeah.
So we're talking about the sixty percent and the forty percent, the heat's gonna, is okay there, because the pipe is not corroded?
This is Scott Henrichs with Weston Sampson. He's done a lot of the development. Off the cuff, I would, do you remember what square footage that was? It's probably about sixty percent, because it's not the auditorium and it's not the addition.
It's about eleven thousand square feet, a little over eleven thousand square feet.
So the auditorium...
It's in the fifty-fifty range, somewhere in that.
Okay, so the auditorium is, the heat there is fine?
The, the...
Is acceptable?
It, it's acceptable and the, the piping for it is not in as bad an area. Would I like to see that changed as well? Yes, but the, the package that we're looking at and the price point has carved that off and it's not as big an area. Maybe Scott can talk to the condition more on it.
So I, I would just, just start by saying that kind of the, to do this right, right, to replace the HVAC, to get rid of the steam heat is probably a four to five million dollar project, right?
We already know what the spilling's gonna be in two or three years, or five years.
Right. So, we've, we've kind of backed into a design that gets us close to what the board had earmarked from ARPA funds, if that makes sense, right?
All right, so intuitively, let's say this is a million dollars. You can put heat pumps in a five thousand square foot house for twenty-five thousand dollars. That includes the mini splits, all that kind of stuff. So we look at this and you're like, okay, well, eleven thousand squared feet, let's take twenty-five thousand, multiply it by ten. So, I'm at two fifty versus a million. Forget about the five or six billion, because that was never going to happen. So now I'm trying to think...
I think it's more than just heat, but I'd like, I'd like you guys to kind of explain the philosophy.
But, but really, the question is, and I, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else here, can, are we spending really far more money than we need to in order to keep the building at sixty-eight degrees in the winter, maybe play, have air conditioning in the summer, but maybe not? And can we do that for substantially less? Because the school's going through a whole planning process for their needs over the next ten years. So, so this building could become completely obsolete. So for the town to put in a million dollars into an asset that we may not use two years from now, or three years from now, I mean, no one knows...
Sure.
Is really, you know, questionable. And so that's really, that's, so that's why I'm asking these questions, is to understand, how can we squeeze the money out of this project? So, sorry to jump in like that, but...
So, I, a lot of what's, has to happen in that building is, one, in public construction, follows a whole different set of rules and costs. And it's not just, you know, putting a condens, compressor outside and, and a fan. It's a, you've got asbestos to deal with, you've got coring through floors. We're going to be talking about trying to do it in an occupied building, because there is no place right now. If we're running to the timeline that we've been shooting for to get this off-the-ground bid and then work with a building that, you know, the rec department and the downstairs program has no other place to go, a lot of those are the factors that drive the cost up in what we're doing. Plus, there will be some extent of electrical wiring, upgrades, and I, I can let, again, Scott's been the one to do the detail.
But maybe as you do, as the presentation, we could talk about not, not doing, you know, you know, was it eight hundred amps? And we're not doing four hundred amps, we can do something else that's going to be more manageable, manageable for us. I know, I know what the report says.
Sure.
But like, how, how do we actually get this to happen? If the timeline is not this year, it's next summer, then maybe it's to be next summer. That's just life. Because what happens if we don't do this at all? It's still going to be what it is.
Right, and it's still going to be an occupied building in the summer. They have programs set.
But, but we have more time to plan. Park, we have the kids about at Parkhurst and down at Lynch, presumably by then, right? By next, I'm talking about by next year. So there's, there's a whole bunch of things. I want to see it happen.
But I, I think the, the concern is, we had a very difficult winter this year, right? And do, can we make it through the winter next year if we don't have something done between now and January?
I mean, that was, that was the drive that brought us to the table, the first time.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
It's, you know, what happens if one of those catastrophic events, a steam system lets go? We have an asbestos release. What do you do with the tenant that's in there? What do you do with the programs of this?
But that's, that's the school department's tenant, right?
Well, in the rec department, the recreation department, which has...
Still, but it's a school department's building, too. So we have to bring this plan to them and get their approval to do, to do this, right?
Yeah, it's just, we, we set this kind of timeline in motion when the board voted the hundred and fifty thousand, that we were trying to get something in place for the winter season, right? And so we've been following that kind of timeline. If we're going to deviate, that's a conversation we can have, but there are repercussions, right?
It's just that it's June third, and we don't have an agreed-upon plan. We still have to bid it and get it done. By school, by, by heating season? Ah, maybe. But, but probably not. Sorry, Pete.
No, that's fine. I, you know, this is...
Not, not throwing water on it. I'm just like, obviously, I got stick of shock when I saw that. I'm like, okay, wait, this is...
Yeah, I mean, and it's a lot less than, than doing a full-blown project. There was very much a drive from even this body with what happened last year. So, to take the number that, that had been discussed from ARPA, build something that is the most reliable way to maintain heat for the programs that are running in there and not, and reduce the risk of catastrophic failure where we have to close down the building. That's what this project does. Takes that core area that, that is the hundred-year-old piping for the most part, isolates that out so it won't carry steam. We will have that as a backup, and this will be heat pump and add the ability to have air conditioning in those spaces that are going to be covered, which is a program enhancement for the rec department, who uses that for renting out. That's the table. The other, if we don't do this, it's, we're going right back to the risk that brought us to this table back when we couldn't control heat, when we had three steam leaks that caused asbestos abatement during an occupied building. That's what we risk if we don't...
Is this proposed for fifty percent of the building?
I would say at least fifty percent of the building.
So it's a million dollars for fifty percent? Okay, that's, I just wanted to understand that.
So, one thing I remember when we, when John and I walked through this with you, Pete, and, and school committee chair and vice chair, we went downstairs to Kids Corner. And they have window ACs, I know. And they said, we know, you know, it's too warm. So, I'm, you know, like, we don't have a problem with heat. We definitely saw the problem in the annex side with the heat.
Yeah.
But what I'm remembering is they were like toasty. So, do we, can we look at the scope and say, this part of the boiler, and it's delivering heat like crazy to the basement, part of that core, and the other problem is the upper levels in the annex? Like, does this design consider that we, we don't have a heat problem at Kids Corner, but we do have a heat problem not just in the core, but in that annex side?
Well, what I'll go back to is, it's more the reliability, the steam piping, the hundred-year-old, which is all in that area. We generate the heat down there, pushes it throughout. We don't have a bunch of control down there. The more we're trying to push, the more they get. When we do this, if we do this project, and that's the core, all that steam piping that, that serves that area is going to be isolated out and that, they will have the, the, the heat pumps in those areas. So, it's down there, it's not because they have too much heat, it's still the reliability of the system and the age where we've had a number of, as I said, the, the pipes are so corroded, it's where they meet each other and it's inside the threads. It's under asbestos wrap. When those let go, that's what we're chasing during the, during the heating season. And it's that hundred-year-old portion of the building. So, that will be controlled, it'll go, it will be an electrification project. There are incentives, which will be quantified after the plan is developed, bid and all that. But this is also a drive to, to electrify that area of the building. So, we did meet with the, I did meet just a little while ago with the energy committee. There is even more openness to these supplemental heat sources than there used to be for rebate. This is approximately a thirty-ton demand, and, and it's anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five hundred dollars per ton on the rebate side. But, that's not tangible for the project, that's after it's developed.
It's a rebate, right? So we have to front the money.
Yep.
That would be a general subsidy.
But, I mean, it meets the qualifications of an electrification project, too.
That's good. So, the other question, this could be a totally stupid question, but here it comes. So we know we get into this with a heat problem, and this design contemplates heat and cooling to some degree. Do we save money if we don't accommodate cooling and we just put the building back into the system that it's in?
But on the construction, though, the, the machine does heating and cooling.
It's the same thing. We, I did the same exact thing with my house. We have steam heat. It's so hard to control. We had the same thing, like, with the Mystic School. And when you're putting in heat pumps, they're just naturally coming in with both heating and cooling.
Fair enough.
And it makes no difference, one way or the other.
So the heat pump is, is a more costly machine, and your byproduct is air conditioning. You can have a policy that we don't provide cooling, but that's the equipment you need to provide the heat for a heat pump.
Cruel, unusual punishment, Pete.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to implement that.
Up the energy surcharge, that's all.
Call Michelle before you turn that dial. Pump says no.
You want that?
You know, you were talking about the, the cost of residential heat pumps. I'm actually putting an addition on my house right now, and I'm putting heat pumps in.
Yep.
And it's costing me about seventeen thousand dollars, I think, for two, two-ton heat pump systems fully installed. This is just the nature of public work in Massachusetts. It's just, and, and there is a lot of, you know, I don't have asbestos in my house. You know, the, the impact of, you know, to get an electric service, a two-hundred-amp electric service in my house is not that expensive. This whole thing was set up, like Pete said, to try to mitigate and give you as much heating resiliency going forward as we could within about a nine-hundred-thousand or so dollar budget.
Right.
You know, that, and, and then the other thing that we backed into as well is by using your utility bills and understanding what you have for an existing electric service, we backed the, the size of the project, both financially and electrically, so that you didn't have to spend another fifty, a hundred thousand dollars replacing the entire electric service. There is some cost with the existing electric to be upgraded so that we can feed different panels, et cetera. But, you know, we, we've kind of baked you a cake that, that fits into that, that nine-hundred-thousand dollar and gets you the heat in the area of the building that's most at risk currently for, for heating failure.
So I have a couple of questions, and I think my fiance's, can, so can we classify this as an emergency repair, and then we don't have to go to public bidding?
I don't know.
Sounds like emergency.
I...
Pete?
I, I would, you would have to, somebody would have to reach out to DCAM. DCAM's the only one that can tell you that, that's, it's an emergency repair. Can try.
I think it's definitely worth it.
I'm not sure it changes our... I'm not sure it changes our timeline dramatically, right? I mean, you need probably a couple months to put a set of plans and specs together. And then, it saves the, the bid time, which is, what, four weeks, but not necessarily much.
Yeah, this project would probably be an HVAC prime. So, the only file submit we'd probably need would be electrical. Kind of like we did it at the fire station. But yeah, it's still, you're still looking at most of a four-week bid period for reality. And yeah, so you're, you're looking at two months. I mean, we're really talking about five or six weeks to pull the sign together. But it's got to be reviewed, it's got to be approved, it's got to be reviewed by you folks, comments have to come back.
Right.
That's another couple of weeks, and it always ends up more like two months.
Right. So I mean, I think our, the timing Pete and I talked about today was trying to get something out to bid, like, late August, early September timeline. And that would give us enough time if, for some reason, something went bad with the bid, we have this December thirty-first deadline for the ARPA funds, if we needed to.
We always start the system the day of the bid to see if it breaks.
That's true.
That's one of the things that we were looking into when we had the discussion last time, was the Energy Champion Grant that we've used, you know, pretty consistently over the years. And if we could, you know, pull a few years together for like a larger project like that, did we get kind of confirmation?
I think we decided that the timing of it didn't work when we talked about it early this year. Yeah.
We had just missed the November window, is what I remember.
Yeah.
So now we're coming up against a September, October window, because we had just missed...
It's a lot of money, right?
Yeah.
We talked a little bit about the bigger picture of this whole thing. And, and, you know, I think this buys you about a five-year window where you're, you know, within five years or so, you're going to need to make a real decision as to what the long-term position of that, that building is going to be. Because it's going to take you three or four years to get something pulled together that's really comprehensive and out to bid and constructed and everything else. And, you know, the equipment we're talking about is a ten-to-fifteen-year piece of lifetime.
So, and, and we really didn't talk too much about it as far as after its bid. And we are in the heating system. We could start working around the occupied building and the heating building until it came time to cut in and do the, either the transformer change and the steam pipe.
Yeah, I think your, your biggest difficulty is going to be the utility, because the, your electric service is substantial enough, but the transformer that's feeding your building is tiny. And that's going to have to be replaced. And that, we've had lots of difficulties with utilities lately. Um, and that's gonna have to be replaced and that, we've had lots of difficulties with utilities right lately, gas and electric. Getting new services upgrades or, or getting.
And that's working with EverSource.
I'm sorry?
That's working with EverSource.
It's been EverSource, and, so, excuse me, EverSource and, and.
I'm just wondering if we can peel that piece off and start that sooner.
So you, I mean, we can get that information off to EverSource before, before going out to bid. Right? So that could maybe be about a month out. We'd, we'd still have to vet the electric loads and everything else that we need to do. And have, I would say, like seventy, eighty percent of a design. To the point where we're confident enough with, yeah, this is the way it's gonna be, let's get it out to EverSource. And, and we, that does happen. We do these ahead of time once in a while.
Is the cost of transformer on us or is that something EverSource provides?
So that's a good question. Um.
It's always been on us for every project.
Well, you get a back charge, um, but the back charge is based on a lot of different factors. You know, you, they're gonna be putting a much larger transformer, but assuming you're gonna use this for your heating system, they're gonna be getting a lot more revenue from you folks as well. So that cost factors in in your back charge typically.
So it's a loss leader.
Well, sometimes it can be. I've seen projects where the, the back charge is almost nothing. I've seen projects, we, we've got one right now, I think it's in, in Bill Ricker, the gas, new gas service is, is over almost a quarter million dollars. So it depends on a lot of different factors that we're running like three-quarters of a mile down a road to get the gas service in and that's the way it goes.
The timing working with them, you gotta get.
It's the timing is the problem, yeah.
That's why I'm wondering if we can like, if we can start that piece sooner, um, as soon as we can, cause I mean, we all know.
We can get the work. Before you go out to bid, I think so.
So, in the report that you guys put together, there were two options plus an optional upgrade of the electrical service. So if we kind of set that optional upgrade aside, which unless it's, I think, completely necessary to get the project done, I think we'll kind of put that to side for the moment.
The idea was, you know, we understand that the town has a, an electrification mandate. Um, and, you know, we were just saying, okay, well, if you do decide to keep the school and, and, you know, go forward with a more holistic project, you would be ready to go with a completely electric building without other upgrade.
So of the two options, I think Pete's preference is for option two, which is uh the VRF.
The VRF, yes.
How does that work, Pete? What, what is the difference?
So it's variable refrigerant, blah, blah, blah. So sorry, I, I knew it a minute ago at Energy Committee. So, so if uh, option one, which is uh, you, twenty-six thousand dollars, I believe, less than the VRF, would be uh sticking individual uh split systems all along the building to hit individual rooms where the VRF would be multiple, three larger units that sit outside and pens look a lot better and, and I'll let Scott, he's the guy that designed it.
Is it more efficient or?
Yeah, so the, like Pete said, the, the individual heat pumps, you'd have a, you'd have a condenser unit outside of every single classroom. And, and you know, since you're a two-story building, there'll be two. Um, with the VRF, you'll have three larger condenser sections and because those sections are manifoldled into each space, um, there's a lot of logic that goes along and they can actually take heat from one space and put it in another. So there is, you know, you might see a fifteen or twenty percent energy savings somewhere in that ballpark. I mean, we could, we can model that out and get you a, a more better understanding of that, but um, that's typically about what you see.
And the VRF is the one that has higher incentive rebate.
So, you know, you're talking like ninety thousand or so for the for the, the plain heat pumps in the VRF is probably a little over a hundred.
So the nine fifty-six number that you provided is not fully loaded with like CA services or anything, so that is probably gonna go up a little bit.
There are no engineering services in that number, that's all construction.
So in an ideal world, our request would be for one-point-one to one-point-two to be more comfortable getting through full design, the contingency dealing with the asbestos and whatever plops up with electrical and maybe even have some add alts related to the electrical if, you know, we thought it was worth some more upgrade at the time of the electrical as we talked about.
But the one fifty that you have now is enough to get you through.
I think I have about thirty right now in the contract, but one fifty would be more.
Sorry, we, we have, we have another.
Yeah, no, I, I understand your, your budget's about one fifty and I think that should not be an issue.
And then if, if we kind of move along with this, you know, August timeframe, end of August, early September bid timeline, hopefully get somebody on board by like mid to, early to mid-October, what's, that's construction schedule, do you think? Are these long lead time items or?
No. Or they haven't been as of like the last year and a half. We can even get electric panels now, which is amazing. Cause that's been one of the other problems. Um. You know, we're looking at realistically a month's worth of submittals and planning and that type of thing. It's probably about a three-month construction period for real. And then, and then you've got, you're gonna, you are gonna have, you know, we talked about doing this while the building is occupied. Uh, when they, there are some asbestos cores that are gonna be required and there is a little bit of asbestos work when we tap new valves into the steam system. The building really needs to be vacated for that, but, you know, we can throw a few bucks at that and do it on the weekend if you had to.
Or pick a day when the programs are not there because they're all on field trips.
Sure.
Which is pretty frequent. As, as a parent who has kids at both the WIDREC and the Kids Corner programs, I can tell you.
Or Veterans Day, or, I mean, there's.
Well, the problem is a lot of the times you have a, a cycle of time that it has to sit for your sampling, so.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's not like they can be gone for eight hours, do a glob, some stuff it could, but some of the bigger ones it do air sampling and it has to be over a certain period of time.
So I think we need to, I don't know, Pete, if you have, and or Beth, if you have, but it's something that we'd identified, you know, last, last winter. Select Board's putting some ARPA investment toward it. So we had Chair and Vice Chair of School Committee join us, but to what degree do they need to approve, right? It's, it's their tenant and their building. I'm just curious about the, the mechanics around, like, we could decide today, like, all systems go, but they need to be okay with it, right? So is the plan for like me or us to go to School Committee, go to a meeting?
Yeah, I did share uh the report that we got on Friday with them, with the School Committee and, and the Superintendent, but I agree, like, we need to we need to make sure um that everybody's comfortable moving forward. We don't have a lot of, if we're trying to make this kind of timeline, I wanna release Scott as soon as possible to move into design, so um, you know, if the board is comfortable with the concept, subject to the School Committee being also comfortable with it, we could, you know,
Right. And it doesn't sound like there's a, there might be a, a day here or there, we're gonna figure out, right, for asbestos, but it's not as if the School Committee's tenant is at risk of having to leave and there's lost revenue for a month, right? We're not asking them to vacate. So we're not telling, but it's, but do they agree they want us to just invest in that building and rip stuff up and it's an improvement, an asset that they have.
Well, I think it's also a question of, is, you know, when they're looking at the big picture, is this how they would want us to spend this money on a school project, right? So is this a priority for them? Right? Um, because I think from their perspective, they say, hey, whatever you guys wanna do with ARPA funds, spend it on one of our buildings, great, right? But, you know, we're, we're, it's zero sum, so we're just trying to figure out what the priorities are. So I think it's you know, a question when they look at their capital projects as well, that we're investing in a school capital project.
Yep. Let's just go get with them.
What's our, uh, like, what's our left turn timeline? Um, if we, if we have about as much money remaining in ARPA, if we determine that we're not comfortable with it, or School Committee's not comfortable with it and we determine that it's not gonna move forward, where do we go with those ARPA funds?
So we have um the library window project, I would say, on the back burner that we've kind of been pushing along in a timeframe that if we had to pivot to another project, that's the one kind of in our conversations that we have teed up as a backup. Um, so that's kind of the plan. But, I mean, I think if we don't do this, then we, and we do nothing, that building is at serious risk. And, and it's, um, I understand it, you know, it's a school building, but it may fall on our DPDW to keep the heat up running, right? And, and at some point, we're not gonna be able to keep the heat running. So we have to, you know, if we, if we don't do this now and this becomes a longer-term capital project, it's you know, there's, there's real repercussions to that.
Yeah, that's the programs.
Yeah, you used the word catastrophic earlier, talking about the building. If this building isn't usable for those programs, it will be catastrophic for hundreds of families in this town that need those, that childcare every day so that they can go to their jobs and do everything they need to do. And if, if we're, if we don't fix that and we're putting the money towards the library windows, that library is probably gonna become the new wind rack. Because those kids have to go somewhere for us to pay our taxes.
Windows new kids.
So.
So Pete, aside from, sorry.
Yeah, like, I think we need to move with all due haste here.
Aside from the, the heating, are there other critical issues with that building? So we don't die by a thousand cuts. Because Bill Warburg, this is like, you know, Parkhurst is gonna be available within a year. We have a million dollars to spend. Is that the right place to spend it? School Department might tell you, no, it's, 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 it's not. They might say, I, I don't know, but it's not, but it's, it, so I'm just looking at all things and I, I, I'm an advocate for doing something there because of the, frankly, inconvenience of the parents.
Yeah, I mean, sadly, John, a lot of this, for me, I really wish that we had thought about Parkhurst becoming, you know, a better swing space and, and moving the school administration out of it, like was proposed to town meeting, I think, two years ago now. And, and town meeting didn't want to invest in that. I think now we're really seeing what value and need we have for a good swing space when something like Mystic is about to fail. And, and we're living with those decisions now. And I wish we weren't, but this is where we are.
So are there, are there other things, like whether it's plumbing, the bathrooms, uh, it just, you know, is there anything that's a, else that's a disaster over there?
Yeah, you know, the, the building is an aged old building that, you know, we, we spend time there. Uh, this is the critical need right now and uh if.
Is it roof beat?
At the, no, we actually, so the work that we've been able to do over the years was years ago, we put a good roof on it and it's got a lot of life to it. The envelope is good. Uh, we've done a bunch of asbestos abatement over there. We've added insulation to the, to the attics. We replaced ceilings there that were falling down. So we've been attentive to it. We've rebuilt the boiler over there. Uh, but i- it's an old building. We keep replacing plumbing, but, and, you know, is plumbing bad and Parker's behind the walls? Sure, that's bad too. The biggest problem over there, and it's not anything that's gonna gonna jump out and shut the building down, but the windows are terrible. You guys acknowledged that a while back. Um, and we're actually looking at a small grant for at least those worst ones right now on the backside. Uh, it's, I'm, it's a good solid building. That's, you know, that's the way I feel about it. And uh.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue is once you start doing substantial improvements, you trigger ADA requirements, so then we're gonna end up with not, having to put an elevator in, right? So it just.
Yep. Right, so if you spent, is it thirty percent of the assessed value of the building, it, it takes in a whole.
Which is what we had to do at Parkhurst.
Over thirty-six months.
Right. So do you know the assessed value of the building?
Uh, I don't.
Last I saw it was about seventeen million, but he, uh, the assessor was gonna reevaluate all the schools because he thought they were low, so that could be going up, but it was seventeen million last I looked.
Are you a buyer? Michelle's looking to buy.
Pete, you had said that we had done the VRF at McCall as well, or somebody had said that.
We, we've done VRF in the addition and the, uh, and also in that first sp- space modification over there.
What was the, the, the cost per ton for, for that project? Do we know?
I honestly, I don't know. It was pre-COVID and during COVID and I don't remember a lot from that. It was so crazy back then.
And whether that's reliable now or not, who knows, right?
That, that system's performed as advertised, five years later, whatever that is, the VRF?
Uh, it, it's working well now. Uh, uh, as Scott alluded to, the, the technical aspects and the programming and tying with everything was, was difficult and we, we rang it out over a couple of years and it's, it's running good now. Uh, I will give uh credit to our man, Chris Conway, who works on the team. And his technical ability just surpasses anybody I know, so. Uh, he was able to wring the bugs out that we never would have found even through commissioning, so. Uh, it is running well.
So just to give you a sense of the proportion of cost, right, the, the estimate has about three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars worth of cost. That's actually in the HVAC system, so, you know, there's six-hundred-thousand dollars in other stuff.
Yep. Get rid of that other stuff? Was it like, was like the asbestos?
Sure, it'd be a big fat change order, but um, you know, so, I mean, we talk about cost per ton and, and it, it's, it can be really dangerous to think that way. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
So we're, you know, you know, we're talking approximately ten-thousand dollars a ton to buy the.
I think it's a, it's a difficult building, it's an old building, and it's an occupied renovation. All, all of those things.
Public work too, and it just tracks up the price.
Costs go high.
Right? I mean, that's in, in line, I'm paying, I think, twelve or, no, it's, huh, fifteen, seventeen thousand for mine. So I mean, your, your price per ton for, for VRF is actually cheaper than mine, if you look at it from that point of view.
So I think um, if the board is comfortable saying that we'll move forward, if the School Committee's comfortable move for, moving forward, or we can bring this back to the meeting on the next meeting if we're not comfortable making that decision tonight. I just don't wanna let this linger too long if we're trying to stick to this timeline we've talked about.
Yep.
I would just like to know from the School Committee, you know, um, outside of them saying, sure, you know, like, how much of a priority this is for them and what their future plan is for the facility. And I don't wanna wait till they're done their whole, you know, you know, ten-year master plan, right? We don't have time for that. So we've been talking about this, they've been in the loop for a while. We all want, we all wanna solve this problem, you know, we just, um, are managing limited resources and um, you know, if we have it just for five years, you know, it doesn't feel great to be spending this amount of money, even though we have to, right? So that's, that's it, I mean.
We're in our place, right? That, that the, the lease, well, for some, one of the tenants is with the School Department.
Yeah.
But we're responsible for maintaining the building. We have to go find them permission to maintain the building if a flame's out, we have to solve the problem.
Right.
Right? Do we? Find an alternate space if we can't?
It's our recreation department.
We would just shut it down otherwise.
Oh, okay, okay. That's not the tenant I was thinking of.
Yeah.
Right.
And they're all mine, you know? Doesn't matter school, town.
You don't get to pick your favorite buildings, Pete.
I get to walk.
Pete has no favorite buildings, I can guarantee that.
Uh, can I just, like, just real quick with a clarification? I have from January twenty-second. Uh, we had, when, when um Ken came in to talk about options, um, the one that was not the larger Green Communities Grant was like a mass save utility incentive, which is, I think, what we're talking about would bring back maybe a hundred thousand dollars or so. And I also wrote down like rolling national grid, were those one in the same or were there two different potential?
Mass save is your utility, utility incentives.
Yeah.
Which is the ones that we've been talking about, the twenty-five-hundred dollars a ton for standard heat pump and um like thirty-five-hundred dollars a ton for the VRF.
Which is a, it's a rebate.
It is.
Yeah.
And that is, that is the national, that is also, that's national grid.
Yeah, it's, it's mass, it's everything in Massachusetts that you get from utility. They call it mass save.
It's mass save. We were just going through it at Energy Committee that it'd be enhanced.
Yeah. I was just trying to, I started out, I figured those, that the way I wrote that, those were the same thing, but that there wasn't something else that we had talked about.
Yeah, there's no two, one from EverSource and one for national grid. It's that one, either twenty-five-hundred or thirty-five-hundred, I believe they were for either one of the systems, but.
And the, the Green Communities Grant was the other one that we're talking, I called it.
The Green, yeah, it was the decarbonization. Um, but I wrote down the timeline, it can't apply until October and would adhere late January, so that would
Right.
Again, bonk timeline, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't mind, you know, using, I mean, ARPA is the easiest thing for us to do, right? Cause it's just us voting it. So I mean, I don't mind getting rebates and doing that, if the, you know, if we keep the total cost of the project at a certain amount and we get those credits and those rebates and, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're doing a project like this and we're, we're using, you know, those resources from the state and elsewhere, so.
Yep, as best we can. Okay, so for the group, do we wanna wait and hear from the schools and then officially vote it on the seventeenth?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to wait and see what the school's saying.
It's fine.
I'm happy to participate in the discussion with them, so.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll set something up with them and report back to the group.
Nice to come to the cross examination, you guys. Nice to come to the cross examination.
Yeah.
It was nice.
Seriously.
Yeah, no problem.
So is the board gonna reach out?
Yes.
You guys will do it? Okay.
Yes. Beth and I will. We can invite you, Bob, if you want. And don't go anywhere, Bob, because we're gonna switch quickly to, uh, transfer station. So we'll go to that next, but thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Pete. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Sorry to keep you here so late.
See you soon.
It's good, good job security though, right, Pete?
That's right.
All right, so just switching gears, um, to jump down, cause Beth was good to say, hey, while Bob's here, let's go over transfer station.
Last one here.
So, um, as you all know, we have a current contract with, uh, was Wheel Abraider. They just, uh, changed names to Wind Waste, um, that goes through FY twenty-five. Um, and so, um, Bob and Leanne and Nick were proactive in, in reaching out to them to talk about what I guess is known as a blend and extend. Um, and at the same time, they reached out to Republic and Covanta to see kind of where, where the market was, pricing was. Um, Wind Waste came back with, I think it was the best of the three, which is to keep our fixed, the, keep the FY twenty-four fixed rate for FY twenty-five and then have, um, reasonable increases going forward, uh, through FY twenty-eight. So this would be, this contract would renegotiate FY twenty-five. Our current contract ends in FY twenty-five and then it would extend it to FY twenty-eight.
Right, so we're your extension.
Um, and I think we, you know, we met, a staff reviewed the options. I think we are, we're most comfortable with the Wind Waste option, which ends up with like a twenty-five thousand dollar savings, I think for twenty-five over what we had originally budgeted. So our recommendation is, uh, because of the duration of the contract, the board has to, has to vote, uh, to approve it. Uh, our recommendation is we move forward with an extension, um, for, with Wind Waste.
So any questions on that before we decide? Any discussion? I appreciate the outreach and trying to keep us kind of holding us steady to something, um, and some predictable escalation, which is good, so.
And the, it looks like the escalation and those out years is environmental fee, pretty.
Pretty standard now in all their contracts, yep.
Is that a state? I saw that. Was it two fifty-eight ton or whatever that is? Is that, uh?
Is it state mandated? No, no. It's each, each, um.
Junk fee.
Oh, yeah. Each vendor had a different fee, yep.
Awesome. Okay.
But, you know, when raise, waste wasn't, uh, giving us a fuel fee, so that helps.
Yep. Truck's lining up and you're paying for them to wait. So, I mean, it looks like it's a little bit of wash, right? And sort of traffic costs or overtime costs.
Correct.
And we're holding some things firm. We're still gonna see escalation, you know, starting in twenty-six and beyond, but from what you, we got us as research, it looks to be the most cost effective. And are you satisfied with the service? Are we satisfied with the service?
Yeah, cause it's the least amount of time that we wait in lines. So, um, if we went to Covanta, we'd be waiting hours and hours in their lines there. So for us, it's, we're saving on overtime as well, so it's a, it's a better contract.
So Bob or Beth, are there any kind of, uh, weasel clauses in there where all of a sudden we can get hit with an increased tonnage charge?
Nope.
No.
Okay, great.
The what, the what?
It's a detective term. Weasel, weasel clause.
Oh, oh, Stone.
Oh.
Oh, what? Sorry, Mike.
Yeah, some of them you should have.
Wow.
I just did.
Never miss an opportunity.
That was coming back my way. I just haven't worked.
It's gotta come back to you.
I move that we renegotiate and extend a contract with Wind Waste.
Weasel fees are not.
John, you got it, John.
Oh, no, what? I guess, oh, oh, you, oh, we, I got, oh, you gave me something special tonight. That's right. All right. Sorry. Uh, I move that the select board approve the amendment to the contract by and between the town of Winchester and Wind Waste Innovations, extending the term to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight for solid waste disposal services for the town and authorize the town manager to execute the same on behalf of the board.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Well spoken.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, that's much better, Beth.
Uh, just as an FYI, we're, um, we're doing a one-year contract with Republic for recycling. They're keeping the FY twenty-four rates for FY twenty-five, so we're in pretty good shape, I think.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, so let's moving through, keep those motions handy. Let's move up to, uh, item number twelve, outdoor dining, China Sky. Looks like we have an updated application. Is everything in order, Patty, Beth, as far as we know?
Yeah, if there's any questions, actually, Michael is here.
Yes.
Um, so they're proposing to use one parking space plus some additional right of way area, which is about the size of a half of a space, I would say.
I'm sorry, talking about, I mean, he said ten feet, but I did simulations. Uh, it looks like stretching out about six feet is just allows it, allows a parking to get by. And since I've set it up, um, none of the trucks have been shipped and getting through. So typical, uh, waste services, uh, five vehicles and so forth.
Yep.
Normally, it's, it's just not picking those space for a whole parking lot setup that would not be allowed parking in front of the spot.
I think it's completely.
Yeah, come on up to the table if you could just. Yep, must we have more questions, but just in case we do.
So Beth, in that, in that license agreement, uh, does it say that they have the use of the sidewalk too?
Uh, yeah, well.
Yeah, so that's how the other votes were because for A, B, C, C regulations.
Can I get out there?
You have to be able to walk across the sidewalk. It's, they're not setting anything on the sidewalk, but you have to be able to, they have to be able to utilize the sidewalk too.
I think that's the case, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, this is the same language as the votes from, um, March when you guys voted the other ones.
Okay.
Um, so the only thing I would just mention is, uh, the outdoor dining policy has a, a fee of a thousand dollars per space. They're utilizing one space plus some additional right of way. So I don't know if you want to just charge for the space or you want to prorate it for some of the additional right of way area that's.
I think it's, uh, sixty-eight, um, sorry, seventy-something inches. So that's like, what is a typical parking space? Almost ten feet? So I guess you can prorate that.
I mean, that's a, a board's decision. I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, it's also starting later than some of the other.
That's true. Yeah.
So I, I don't think we need to charge more than just one space, right?
I don't feel the need.
Yeah.
No.
Out of curiosity, uh, did you guys have this space outside last year?
Uh, so no, we skipped last year just because I wasn't able, um, we didn't have staff, so I had to stay indoors all the time.
Okay.
Okay, I finally found some staff, so I can, I can have some free time to do outdoors.
Gotcha. And, and, um, you, someone just mentioned the other applications came in March. Was there a reason why you guys, this one wasn't handled in March? Did you?
Uh, was, I guess there were some questions. I must have missed the emails, so it wasn't available.
Yeah, just a couple of items that were just outstanding.
At that point, it was just a kind of a quick sketch. I didn't have time to do the simulations. I would, you know, hadn't had a fire department drop by. Cause, uh, basically the problem with the previous setups is when we extended much further towards the corner, that you had to block off the two adjacent parking spots and no one, no one invited by those blocks. So I guess the town got a bunch of complaints and people got tickets and it was just a big mess.
Okay. Yeah, so just some of the details, Bill. There was nothing sort of philosophically problematic with China Sky's application. It just didn't have necessarily all the detail that we needed, so we didn't have enough to vote on it when we voted the other ones back in March. So now that we have all the detail.
Boxes have now been checked?
Yes, pretty much. And I think that additional right of way, it isn't a whole space. It's, I'm with Mike. I'm not feeling the need to prorate you on June third. I think we're, if, if, you know, staff is satisfied, fire departments come, trucks can get down the street. I think we have what we need to vote it.
Okay. I move that the select board approve the use of one parking spot and additional right of way and the use of the sidewalk on Converse, Converse Place to be used for outdoor dining for China Sky no later than ten thirty, no later until ten thirty PM on Friday and Saturday and nine thirty PM Monday through Thursday and Sunday.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. You're good to go. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Just keep working bottom to the top. Yeah, turn the lights on.
Yes.
Um, the EverSource memo, Beth had sent one. Uh, sends around a draft with my name on it. I didn't know if it was gonna go with your name on it, Beth, but that was a nice surprise.
I'm happy to.
It's fine either way. Um, we don't necessarily need to debate it, but if people had some comments, if we could just send the, some feedback back to Beth, certainly in the next couple of days on that EverSource memo, we can try to get it out the door for our next meeting.
Just, just one comment, Beth, that I noticed that we said we spent thousands of hours on this, which I have no doubt. But let's say we just spent two thousand hours, which is on the low side. At fifty dollars an hour, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Right, so, but since all the other ratepayers outside of Winchester benefit from this, why aren't we getting compensated for our time? And certainly when they do Pond Street, there's, there's, I, I'd rather see them in court than, than not get paid for this because.
Even just the overtime, like during construction, not even just the time that we're, we spent, like during business hours, yeah.
So have we gone to them and asked them to be paid for?
It would have, it would have to be part of the original kind of agreement. It was not part of those agreements.
So going forward though, we're gonna have that would be something in there that we will.
I would hope that would be something.
Well, we, we, not hope, but what, I mean, can we ask for that in there?
So the, there's the EFSP decision, right, which is, is what it is. But the board negotiated, um, MOUs with EverSource.
Right.
And so that could certainly be something that could be discussed.
It just seems like it's fair, right?
I think it would be fair. I agree.
If, if we're benefiting Waltham and Burlington and Arlington, then we should not have to bear the brunt of that.
I agree.
Mike, agree. All right, thank you.
They, yeah, they don't love that argument, by the way, but.
We can still say it.
No, I know, it's, it's just.
Yes. So I, if I would just ask for like feedback in the next couple of days and we'll try to get out the door by the end of the week.
Yeah, I, just like overall, as of one, this would be like, I think that it's very problematic that you give them extra time to finish in, um, November, right? And they got the work done, but it's now June and we've had the same road, the same terrible condition of, of road on Cross Street for over six months.
Yep.
As we talked about, good for traffic coming, bad for any other possible option. And I think, I think there's some specific examples we can include that are very clear of like the ways that we have bend over backwards to get, give them what they needed to get the work done. And, you know, personal example, the Lego pieces fall off as you drive down that street on your, on your Lego piece, right? Like, like to, to much broader, like people who are driving that every day, it's not gonna feel good on the cars. So, so like ways that we can also give some of these examples of.
Yeah, I guess.
Here are the things that we did and we have been, had this road, it just pitted and potholed and patched together for the past six, seven months with no, nothing done to it.
Yeah. Just my only feedback, kind of piggybacks on that is if we can put more concrete examples in here, like don't just say the plant, the plans and timelines were completely unrealistic, like detail out how and why, um, why they didn't include certain things.
Letter.
Yeah. I'm, let you, let that be your muse. Get all of your aggression out.
Bring it.
Um, because that's, that's gonna be more persuasive than just whining about it, like giving them facts and statistics.
They didn't bust our water main, right, or sewer pipe?
I'm like, Stone.
We, we could stop them from drilling through the empty debris sewer line about five years ago on Cross Street.
Well, there you go. You could say that one. But I think to Anthony's point, like the, the condition they left the road when they finally finished months and months and months later is still like not acceptable. And here we are, so like we can, we can add some more examples. That's good. Okay, then we'll proceed and we'll, you'll all see a copy when it goes. Um, okay, let's just move up again to number ten then. Sheffield Road closure notice. That's also in our packet. A resident who is asking to, uh, block off a portion of Sheffield, Sheffield Street behind Everett Ave for a four-hour block of time at the end of the month. My understanding in talking to, to Jen and the town manager's office is with block parties, it's sort of more standard with four-hour windows and the entire neighborhood's invited. This is different from that. There goes some back and forth around, would you like to have a block party? Cause there's a different kind of permitting process. This is, so, so far the answer is no, thank you. Um, and, you know, Jen has told us in, in the note to, to our packet that public safety is okay with it. Um, select board would need to decide to agree on the street closure and if we want to have any other insurance. So I have some feelings on this one, but I will wait, I will just hold my opinion and just let, uh, other folks weigh in. Uh, what do we think?
So this has happened, this request was what, once in the last twenty-one years or something? Is that what I read?
That's what it says, yeah.
Um, so it's just a precedent. So if I want to have a party in my neighborhood, then can I close off part of Stevens Street? And if you say, so then you have to adjudicate every single application on why this one has merit, this one doesn't. And I, I don't know who has the time to do that. So we would have to make time to do it. No, exactly. So I mean, I'm, it's a, that's, that's my concern. It's, I'm, I'm sure this would be a lot of fun, but I just, they would have benefits a much bigger group, like an entire neighborhood. It's, it, it's more, more fair or balanced or whatever.
If, if this was permitted more as a block party, how large of a neighborhood, like what, what is the block? Cause they mentioned that they would.
You just have to invite everybody in that stretch, right? Anybody who has frontage. So it would be.
From this street to some other streets, yes.
So I, I got the impression that was just inviting two houses of people.
So the, them, right?
Yeah.
And then the two people across the street and one has kind of a corner that touches on the street. I don't know.
That doesn't seem like a lot to ask for and it doesn't seem like a very big block.
And it fits into our precedent, right?
Yes.
They declined to do that, right?
Well, I, I just.
So far.
Conversations, but yeah, that was.
Yeah, so far I think that, that option has been offered and it's not been taken up or accepted at the present time. So right now, this is the vote we can make.
Yeah.
Uh, the block party option, I imagine, still exists if this request is not approved by us.
Yeah, I have very little worry about authorizing a block party under our usual practices. I, I do have concerns about a private party.
I think my concern is, is you could just for every Saturday and Sunday for throughout the month of June, be playing game of Frogger all over town and not know which party is on which street on which Saturday and which Sunday.
Porchfest.
To Jones. Yeah, porch fest. But you're right, hopefully not porch fest. But I think it just creates that like which street is closed today for whose party and then which street is closed tomorrow. And I think block parties are block parties. They're usually noticed. The neighbors get noticed. You put up the sawhorses. Police know about it. I just think this could be a little bit, it, it could just take off, right? And you'd have like eight street closures every Saturday, every Sunday and you wouldn't know where they're at. Um, and whether we would decide there's merit in all of them, but I think if we do this one, I think it's, it's, uh, a concerning precedent for us when there's an option to have a block party. So that's my two cents.
And I don't know that it's necessarily in the spirit of, you know, our, you know, block party, you know, permissions, you know, historically either. I mean, if you're just saying, okay, it only has to be this house, this house and this house. Typically, we do shut up off, you know, we close down a street and it is a block, right? It is, you know, it's a.
End to end.
It's end to end and it's, you know, kids and, you know, it's.
It's more like a neighborhood party, frankly.
It's, yes, and it's, uh, um, so, you know, this, this is, you're gonna kind of create another exception to it, just be a little, you know, because, um, if the neighbors get an invite to this that says, we're having a graduation party, quote unquote, block party, right? Like no, they're not going to, you know, and we're gonna be shutting down the street essentially for the same reason, you know? So, um, I, I don't know.
They could be having a block party for the graduation, but at least that would sort of be consistent with other block parties, so.
Yeah, and, and we've done two block parties in our neighborhood and they are the full block.
Yeah.
And the full, and not just the block, but.
The side, yeah.
You know, sort of the, the surrounding neighborhood. So I think this is, um, certainly not in the spirit of a, of a block party and that makes it difficult to kind of transition it over to a graduation party. I've been looking just at a map, um, and kind of understanding the, what that little str, like the stretch of Sheffield Road, um. Yeah, it's on the, very few, very few homes there too to...
You know, and I mean, the, the request is, you know, because they want to put a ping pong table outside. I mean, I don't want to get too much in the specifics of the request here, but I mean, it's, you know, having a ping pong table in driveway, I mean, this doesn't sound like a block party. I mean, I don't know.
Are you questioning what a ping pong table is gonna be doing at a high school block, uh, graduation party?
No, I'm not questioning that at all.
I wasn't until now.
I wasn't either, so I'm like...
Because I was a little, I was like, I wonder why the Board of Health isn't chirping.
Say, if somebody says we've got a tent, and we want to, we've got family, we've got, we want to, you know, but it's, it's...
Food trucks are coming, I guess.
Doesn't seem necessary, I guess, is my point, in order for them to achieve what they want to do for their party, whatever. I mean, I, I just don't want these to start coming in, you know, on a weekly basis, and... Yeah.
All right.
It's, it's an easy kind of workaround...
Yes.
Of what we typically do.
All right. Well, I'm not sure I'm hearing a lot of support for this, so do we have to take an official vote of unfavorable? Or we just communicate that there was no favorable action?
I think a vote wouldn't hurt.
A vote wouldn't hurt.
The board voted against it.
Okay.
Oh, I move that we decline the application for block party on Sheffield Street, Sheffield Road.
It's not a block party.
Okay, a graduation party, graduation party, I'm sorry.
Closure request.
Road closure, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of not approving the road closure?
Aye.
Okay. And I am also in the nose. Okay. And someone will communicate that to the applicant? Thank you. All right. So Beth, let's move it on up to the Transportation Network Assessment Disbursement.
So this is something that we used to do at town meeting, but with the new, I don't know, one of the more recent laws that went into effect, we, the board can vote this instead of having to go to town meeting. So this is money that we get every year related to rideshare programs. So we have about, we have 8571 available to us that typically we would have town meeting vote, the purpose for which it would be used either for traffic or pedestrian improvements, and now that the board can vote that. Staff's recommendation is that we put it towards the improvements on Cross Street, similar to what we discussed. We should, we expect to get another dispersment this summer as well, so have a little bit more money.
Great.
Move to accept the Transportation Network Company assessment of $8,571 received in June of 2023 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under Section 8 of Chapter 187, as amended by Chapter 176 of the Acts of 2022. Furthermore, we authorize using these funds towards traffic calming and pedestrian safety improvements on Cross Street.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Staying with Beth and the Lynch Solar Interconnection Service Agreement?
Sure. So this is an agreement Ken, our Sustainability Director, has been working on with Eversource. This agreement is necessary to allow us to connect the Lynch solar system into the electrical grid, and also for us to participate in the smart rebate program. It's been reviewed by Town Council as well as Maya, our insurance rep, and everybody's okay with it, so.
So the only question I had in that is, I know that in some states, you know, particularly with residents, that the, selling the power back to the generator became uneconomic, and they said, we're not gonna do that anymore. Is there an out in there for the utility to tell us, ah, we're not buying your power back?
I don't know that I answered that question, but I'm happy to.
Yeah, that, they just, it's, it's not that we shouldn't do, not, not that we really have any choice anyhow. It was just, from a budgeting standpoint, you maybe don't want to rely on those credits. Maybe you do. It's just, it's, it's, it has a longer-term implication than a year and a half from now.
Sure. Are you comfortable authorizing me to sign it, or would you like to bring it back to the next meeting with that?
No, I'm, I'm...
Okay. Other questions? All right.
So thank you to Ken for the memo. That was very helpful.
Definitely.
I move that we authorize the Town Manager to execute the Lynch Solar Interconnection Service Agreement.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I think the next thing I'd like to do is take up the Winchester Hospital pilot, and then let's decide if we want to spend our time updating ourselves, but...
That's no.
Let's vote the pilot agreement, or authorize Beth to, to sign, right? I think you signed that as opposed to I do.
I don't think it's actually signed by anybody.
We just agree to the terms.
We just agree, yeah.
So as we, you guys know, we've been talking to the hospital for several months. We've got some detail. And even as late as Friday, going back and forth with looking for some additional money, but we have a pilot with the hospital to pay for some public health needs, for some select board funds to go towards sort of unmet needs in the town. And if, with a vote of the board, we can authorize Beth to sign it and hopefully get a pilot payment before the end of this fiscal year. So, John, if you want to make a motion, I think we can do that.
I can make a motion. I just want to thank Beth for her work in this, and everybody else, you, Michelle.
It was a slog, Beth.
So I move that the Select Board approve the Winchester Hospital voluntary payments letter dated May 29, 2024 for fiscal years 2024 through 2026, substantially in the form presented at the Select Board's June 3, 2024 meeting.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Beth, and thank you, Winchester Hospital. We are grateful for what we have. And grateful that there's still some support for some specific positions for us, so I think that's great. We have committee assignments and updates on capital, CPA, and staff performance reviews. What's the will of the board to hear those updates versus take those updates up in a couple of weeks? What do people want to do?
Bill, just power through them. 10 minutes. Set the clock now.
All right. All right. I'll go backwards up, so that, that puts you, Bill, at number seven. We'll just keep going in reverse order.
So for staff performance reviews, the past couple of weeks, I have reached out to town staff who have given me some examples of what's been done in the past. Sadly, there's not a lot of documentation about that. I've reached out to past Select Board members to see what they did during their tenures on the Select Board, and they've provided some anecdotal experience and advice, which has been helpful. I've been looking on the Mass Municipal Association website, trying to find resources there as well, and plus the internet at large. I have found some good guidelines, examples, everything else. I think what it comes down to right now, before any further action can really be taken, is we need to decide the scope and purpose of these reviews. And simply, quickly, part of that is if we are going to be doing performance reviews of the Town Manager, the Town Council, and the Comp Controller, are these going to be reviews provided by the Select Board? Or are we looking to do something more extensive? From the past, it seems like there was a practice at one point of the Select Board, just the five members doing, giving feedback and performing, providing reviews of those folks, or at least the Town Manager, on an annual basis, and then periodically doing what people like to call more of a 360 deep dive review. Since we haven't done any of this in a long time, I don't know where we want to fall in that spectrum. Talking to people around town, it does seem like some of the other boards and committees might have interest in giving some feedback. But I think before any work can be done to start actually developing the process, we have to decide just how broad and deep it's going to be. And so if, if the board has any feedback or guidance on what we want to do, I can take the ball and then start maybe designing what sort of forms would be used in a proposed timeline for getting it done. And when it comes to the timeline, since, you know, I don't know if there are specific periods in the year that we want to target for providing a performance review, like at the end of the fiscal year, or right after a town meeting, or around contract negotiations, or whatever it might be. But that would also inform me on how fast I have to work to get some of this stuff done. So that's where I am, and I need to hear from you guys to see what it is we want to do as a board before I can really take the next steps.
So I think we can, given that we think we have some work planning sessions sort of set up over the summer, I think one of our sort of work plan goals was professional workplace and career path for staff. So I think we can try to work through some of those questions, Bill. Maybe not right now, but certainly in the next two or three meetings. And I think you're right, like, what are the questions? What's the frequency? Who do we ask the questions of, right? What are the performance review questions, and who answers them? And it may be that we decide as a board that we want to do a board review before we go 360. If we haven't done them in a while, we may want to make sure we're good at doing performance reviews. So let's just take that up. Well, if there's an update, we'll keep, this will be on the agenda for two weeks from now, so if there's more that you learn, have a chance to share that. If we have, if people have some ideas to throw at Bill around, questions and timelines, we can do so then. But we'll work through that this summer, I think, and get some answers before the end of July.
Yeah. I'll bring more questions for thought at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think I mentioned last time too, that, you know, we did go through, you know, a significant effort with Labor Council to come up with like a 360 process that we've used most recently.
Yeah, Bill connected with them.
Yeah, I've reached out to him. I forgot to mention that.
Yeah, okay, okay, good.
Yeah, they did make, they did connect. We made the intro, and I was copying, looping on that, so.
Because we invested a lot in that, and I think that it's, you know, consistent with what our objective is, is to kind of professionalize some of this and, you know, put it in place, so it's, it's there and done. We, it, you know, means that we invest a little bit in legal, but I think it's, it's worth it, so.
Okay. If it's okay with the group, I'd like to maybe table committee assignments for now.
Yeah.
And then let's go to CPA next steps, and then John and I will give our update. So CPA.
Did you want us to start our presentation now, or is it...
That'd be great. I'll just pack up my computer and walk out the door, leaving you and WinCam to enjoy your presentation, like C-SPAN at midnight.
So Beth had reached out to the committees identified. You asked them to identify a member among their, their committee or their board to, to be the member of this advisory committee. Apologize in advance for the number of times I say committee in the upcoming minute. What we wanted to think about then was, like, when that group gets together, what is their, sort of, what's the product of that meeting? Those meetings gonna be? What are, what are we gonna come away with at the, the end of that, that time period? And so the thinking was ideally, I believe we asked for that back by the 14th, so that we could have the, the full group identified in advance of our June 17 meeting. So ideally, we're able to convene that group probably five or six times before its, its, its charge ends, before November. So to start that with just identifying where we're going with sort of a specific outreach strategy and looking at some recommendations for how, how we build that and put that together, and doing just a bit of research and synthesis of what, what similar committees in similar communities have looked like. And being able then to bring that back in the fall to this board, to informational sessions, so that people are able to grab that within, sort of stakeholders to get that information, and that can then be wrapped up in October in some analysis, be it a report or a slide deck or a document that kind of meets the goal of that committee and is then reviewed and voted and approved by the Select Board and turned back to the committee. So that's the 10,000 foot, and...
That's pretty good.
Deeper later.
Yeah, thank you. That's a lot. I don't know that John and I are committed to some capital funding has that much, but I will start.
Finish.
I'll start and finish. We're gonna meet like at least once a month. So the output, to start there, I think that was the charge everybody had, what are we gonna come back with? So truly a capital plan, which can inform the Town Manager's capital plan, which we want the Select Board to weigh in on, right? So our capital priorities, what are, what's the capital plan? Looking at the list of projects and where they fall in terms of categories, like which things need to be replaced, which things are net new, which thing need upgrades, like the Mystic School. So capital is capital, but there's sort of categories of capital, and things that have eight and 10-year useful lives, and things that are brand-new acquisitions, and things we never knew, we're in the marketplace, but now we need them. So looking at what we have for projects, putting them in those categories, and looking at, you know, trying to be more planful, because I think we sort of have a reactive sort of way of doing capital to some degree. So let's be planful. What can we do over two to five years? Then how will we pay for it, which is that funding piece? To the extent that maintenance and other things, is there a piece of, you know, departmental budgets that can accommodate some maintenance beyond what we give in our strategic maintenance fund? We're not gonna try to blow up the yellow sheet in the next fiscal year, but what, what some, maintenance and equipment, should some of those things live within the operating budget and not necessarily look at capital? So we're gonna be looking at those decisions. And like I said, I'm thinking we're gonna try to meet once a month. And yeah, that's the output, I think, for the group, so I'll let John chime in.
No, wait, I just, do we set a timeframe to have this done by?
I think we're hoping for November. Because I don't, we're not gonna have it for the capital cycle, which starts the summer, right? We know that. But maybe for spring capital cycle, and certainly to report back to fall town meeting. And I think that brings me to my last piece for the, the board, which is, we have these committees. We have, you know, we talked about setting spending targets, right? Growth targets on the budget, maybe having quarterly budget meetings, not just once in January. So one thing I wanted the group to think about, and you can, you know, shoot me or not, but if we're trying to talk to Planning Board more frequently, FinCom and look at the budget, you know, three times a year, four times a year, maybe we have meetings where we all report to each other from all of our committee assignments, like what's going on. I think we need to find another meeting in our month, and I think we need to find, maybe it's a Friday morning. So we're doing VFA this Friday, doing it for an hour. Maybe we need to find, you know, we do two Monday nights, and we do one Friday morning or some morning that we can commit to, and we have, that's updates. It's posted, it's public meeting, but it's updates, or it's collaboration with some other standing boards and committees. So I think if we're trying to be intentional about talking more and understand what's going on, we need to make the time and the space for it. And 10:30 on a Monday night is probably not the time. So I just wanted the group to think about that. I, I think it's maybe inevitable or unavoidable if we're really trying to truly know, hey, what are you hearing on capital? And hey, what are you hearing on affordable housing? And Anthony, what are you hearing on, you know, environmental? And what does that mean for us? Because with 13 items on the agenda, we don't leave ourselves a lot of time for updates. So I would just like the group to think about that, and we'll try to fit it in where it can fit with people's professional schedules and, and work life. But I think there's probably another hour needed in our month inviting other people in to talk with us, or to talk among ourselves over here. So that was my last thought of the day, what people think, but...
Can I throw in a last thought or question for education? It's tangential to a lot of what we've discussed. When it comes to all these boards and committees, we need volunteers. And I had a couple of people come up to me at town day and ask to volunteer. And one person specifically, he wanted to apply to be on the Finance Committee, and I was like, oh, great! And then I saw that we're having the appointment meeting this week, right?
Eh, probably not, but...
Oh. But, so this is now my, trying to figure things out. Do we as a Select Board discuss and notice when we're posting openings for things like the Finance Committee, or capital planning, or all these other ones? Because if not, I just want to make sure I'm checking the website every day to make sure, getting the word out.
So I'm gonna defer to Patty on some of this?
And then they come right to you when...
Yes. So some, so Finance Committee, the reason we may not do it on Wednesday is there are more applicants than openings, so we need to maybe schedule people to come in for interviews. So we may or may not meet on Wednesday to do reappointments, but we may want to actually interview folks. So I need to talk, and FinCom reorganized this evening, so as of tonight, Jeff Calabrese is the new chair, and Eric Damari is the vice chair. I got a text from Jeff. So I need to get with Jeff with his availability to see when we can do it. So FinCom is unique in that it's Select Board Chair, FinCom Chair and Moderator. So I talk with Heather on Friday. But in terms of openings, Bill, so the Town Clerk posts some openings. Sometimes the Town Manager's Office appoints some openings for Select Board-appointed committees. So Anthony is right, it's, it's hitting up the town website, or it's getting email notices. We don't necessarily put the timing around. There's vacancies and cycles and seasons to those seats. And we just ask, and we trust that the Town Clerk and the Town Manager's Office have their, you know, this is the, this is the month we're gonna fill these seats, these are January terms, these are August terms, these are, you know, FinCom or June terms. We're trying to get them filled up before the end of the fiscal year. So I think you can do a little self-service, I think, but we don't generally discuss, like, today's openings are these six boards. That just comes out of other folks in Town Hall.
I've already bookmarked the volunteer page. It is now part of my morning routine, but...
I think too, you know, we, because of a lot of these openings come at different times of the year, you know, we had, we had talked about kind of in our agenda, having some of the ones that were coming up, because it's important for us to recruit... because it's important for us to recruit people as well, right? Because, I mean, everybody gets a lot of emails and a lot of the ones that, you know, if you sign up for everything from the town, like, some can be just, you know, ones that have nothing to do with us, right? So it just, you, you kind of, kind of gloss over in a period of time. But if there are essential ones, right, like FinCom or something like that, that's a big deal, or the ZBA, then, you know, it, it's helpful for us to do some outreach.
And I think our window just closed on Thursday for applicants, so, but we did have more applicants than we had opening, so we will have new members.
Good, do you, do you want more applicants?
Well, the window closed, we have to consider the applicants that are in there as of Friday morning and that's what we have to work through.
So what we do need is a personnel board.
Yes.
Personnel board?
And the audit advisory committee.
I think I saw Shade Tree Committee was up there.
Those are just for two advisory persons, they're not, they're just to-
I'm going to put another plug in right now.
So basically what it is, is that everything comes to me to post. Marion will send me something and I do the posting. And as I have the, a list of all the committees that the board is responsible for and the town manager. And as these, as they, I have a spreadsheet of them. And as it comes up, you know, I double check it every week as to who's, you know, up at the end of the next month and I post it. So they, you know, April thirty-first was the last day, I posted people first. And then it's, it's open, but it does get sent out to everybody.
Yep.
As some. And I did at last November's town meeting, had a table with all of the opening positions and the whole book of all the committees and commissions and with their jobs for and every, you know, like, everybody took flyers, but I didn't get any tables.
But we do have a-
Except one, you, and you did.
I did, yeah, I grabbed somebody in the hallway. But audit advisory committee does need another person. So that's not open yet, but we do have, so your FinCom person who might like finance, we can get that reopened. We can post it if we think we have an applicant, but that's one seat, an at-large seat that we haven't advertised because we don't have anyone that's necessarily raising their hand, but talk to your person and we'll talk to some of the FinCom people because someone's not going to probably get the role or two. So we'll say that to them as well, but we'll post it.
The audit advisory only meets twice a year.
Twice a year, yeah.
Easy lift.
It's pretty easy.
It's a sweet gig.
Yeah, so that's generally how it works. But, anyway, so the thought on, you guys think on the, the idea of having one more meeting to make sure that we're talking to each other and to other boards and we can discuss it more on the seventeenth. But I think we need to make time somehow and right now is probably not a good time for anyone to be at their best. So with that, let's have a wish to reserve, shall we?
No, I won't, I'm going to move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Oh, right, consent agenda, yes. I always forget that.
I have one upcoming business item. So I think we have previously talked about the community, ARPA community grants and I think we would like to have something formalized on the agenda for the next meeting.
Next one, yes.
But one thought was we have, Beth had gone out once or twice to some community organizations to ask about specific needs. We do have a, a previous list and so I think the question is whether we sort of start with that list or do we start with that, that group of organizations for what needs are? Or are we, would the tune be a broader, broader net that, you know, there's like a larger applicant pool to apply? Or you'd like to hear more and we can take a, take a gander down.
I think I'd rather, you just pause at this point on that one.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is a, like, do we have a, a gut reaction to that, what comes in two weeks leans in that direction?
Okay, thank you. We'll have to make a decision then.
All right, so we'll take, we'll take a gander.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right, and thank you for always being the savior of the consent agenda.
Yes.
Because I am clearly not the savior of the consent agenda.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
All those in favor?
Aye. We will be adjourned to evening.
Okay, so I can, I think all those in favor, yes.
Do we want to discuss, do we want to discuss it? I'd like to go home and rest up for Pride Fest.